Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting of the Bloomington City Council to order Monday, February 6, 2023. Thanks for joining us here in the council chambers and online. We're going to start our meeting as we always do. If you would, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, good evening, and thank you for being with us tonight. We have an interesting agenda this evening, looking forward to it. And our first order of business is to approve our agenda. Council, we have an agenda in front of us, and actually, there is one change, I think, from the published agenda, and I just wanted to be clear here. We had originally, as item 5.1 was the 494 Corridor Commission update. And what I would like to do, and I think it officially has been moved to item 2.3 on our agenda. It's just a matter of moving it forward just a bit to get that done and over with at a reasonable hour in the evening for the folks who are going to be here from the 494 Corridor Commission. Beyond that, we have our introductory items are, we have our, we're going to administer the oath of office to our newest city council member, Mr. Saw Mua will be joining us up here as soon as we get that done. We've got a proclamation for Black History Month, the overview of the I-494 Corridor Commission, and then we've got a number of board and commission appointments to make. We're going to start with item 2.4, which is kind of an overview and the appointment recommendations, just kind of the process we went through, so everybody understands that. And then item 2.5 through 2.9, we're going to make appointments to the Advisory Board of Health, Creative Placemaking Commission, the Human Rights Commission, the Parks, Arts, and Recreation Commission, and the Sustainability Commission. And then finally, on item 2, under our introductory business, item 2.10, we're going to have an update on our Bloomington Tomorrow Together strategic plan from Mr. Sable, our Assistant City Manager. Our consent business is, excuse me, 15 items long tonight, and Councilmember Martin has our consent business this evening. We have two hearings under our hearings resolutions and ordinances. 4.1 is a public hearing regarding a privately initiated code amendment regarding college and university retail and medical office space. And item 4.2, another public hearing, this on the city code amendment creating a TI zoning district and zoning some parcels and a related comprehensive plan text amendment. Wrap up the evening as we always do with our organizational business, which is item 5.1. Council, any questions or additions or changes to our agenda with that one change, I think, from the published agenda to what we have, moving item 5.1, the 494 Corridor Commission overview to item 2.3? Anything other than that? Hearing none, I would move approval of tonight's agenda.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for tonight's, approval of tonight's agenda? No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 6-0, and that will be the last 6-0 vote of our evening. Because our first item tonight is item 2.1, we're going to have the oath of office for our newest council member, Mr. Saw Mua. If you've been following along, folks, and watching, the council has been, for the past six weeks now, I think, been working toward this, doing interviews with 19 candidates and then narrowing that group down to five, having a good council discussion as to which direction to go, and ultimately electing Saw to the council seat to serve as our city council member at large. Very pleased to have you, very excited to see this happen. I'm going to invite soon-to-be councilmember Mua forward. Our city clerk, Christina Scipione, will administer the oath of office. Family, I'm going to tell you this, you get one shot at this, don't miss it. Get in people's way, stand up and take the picture, don't be shy. Do not be shy. Mr. Hanks, I did not say that to you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead and face me. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Saw Mua, do solemnly swear.
I, Saw Mua, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Minnesota.
And the state of Minnesota.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
Of the city of Bloomington, Minnesota.
Of the city of Bloomington, Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
Congratulations.
Councilmember, I want to come down and officially give you the certificate of appointment to the council to welcome you, wish you the best of luck, and say we're so very happy to have you onboard. Thank you so very much for being here. This is part of it, you got a grip and you got a grin. There you go. And now, I'd be happy to turn the microphone over to you for a minute or two, if you'd like to say anything, please.
Yes, thank you, everyone who is here tonight, the council members and to our mayor, to my family, to the residents of Bloomington. I'm extremely honored to have this opportunity to serve you as your council member, and I'm very much looking forward to making sure that we're continuing to do the great work that makes Bloomington an amazing place. So, not much to say tonight, very excited to be here, to take on this role, so thank you so much.
Welcome aboard, glad to have you. Next in our agenda is a proclamation for Black History Month, and I'm going to head down to the podium and make this proclamation. I do want to point out, so this is the proclamation we're going to be presenting, which looks fantastic, except when you've got old eyes that, like I have, and that font is way too small, so I've got to read this one, so I can actually see what I'm reading. So, just to be clear, and I'm going to read the proclamation, it says, it describes it perfectly what Black History Month is and why we're doing this, and I'd like to invite Erica Coleman up here, and we're going to present the proclamation to her, and make this an official Black History Month proclamation.
Eric.
The whole team? Bring the whole team up, bring the whole team up. Do not be shy, team, come on up. This is the City of Bloomington Proclamation for Black History Month, February 2023. Whereas Dr. Carter G. Woodson, founder of the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History in 1915, initiated Negro History Week in 1926 as a way of highlighting the involvement and accomplishments of Black Americans in the development of our nation's democracy. And whereas, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Negro History Week was expanded to Black History Month in 1976. And whereas, during Black History Month, we acknowledge, honor, and celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by Black Americans to our nation's economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas, by observing Black History Month, it provides us with an opportunity to gain a deeper understanding of Black history as American history in the United States. And whereas, in 2021, to celebrate Black History Month, the Office of Racial Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging introduced Bloomington Pioneers and Changemakers, a profile series featuring local Black leaders who are working to advance civil rights and remove barriers to equality. And whereas, in this annual profile series, the city honors pioneers who have done so much to chart the path to where we are today and changemakers who are paving the way for future generations. And whereas, to support and foster our own pioneers and changemakers in the City of Bloomington enterprise, a new employee resource group, a City of Bloomington administration program, the Bloomington Black Employee Network, was formed. And whereas, employee resource groups offer the opportunity to collaborate with colleagues and assist in fostering a more engaged and connected workforce and nurturing professional development. And whereas, the new Bloomington Black Employee Network will offer Black city employees peer support, mentoring, career counseling, and well-being supportive services. And whereas, the Bloomington Black Employee Network will offer the City of Bloomington recommendations on action steps to support, retain, and recruit Black leaders to the city's workforce. And whereas, each year, we will continue to highlight and honor dedicated Black leaders in the City of Bloomington. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Tim Bussie, do hereby proclaim February 2023 as Black History Month in Bloomington, and invite the community to join the Bloomington Black Employee Network in its inaugural kickoff on Thursday, February 23, 2023, with a Pioneers and Changemakers celebration and social networking gathering. In addition, please join the Community Outreach and Engagement Division along with Potter's House Church on Saturday, February 25, 2023, for a Black History Month program from 3:00 to 5:00 at Creekside Community Center dated the 6th day of February 2023. I don't know what more there is to add to that, that was very well-written and wonderful and explained things so very nicely and explained the commitment we have here in Bloomington to our employees and to the folks who make this just such a fabulous city enterprise, such a great place to live, and such a wonderful thing. So, I'm going to hand you the proclamation, and we are going to do the grip and grin. And now, come on, everybody over here, come on, everybody. You get to hold it. Very good. Would you like to say? Well, thank you, and that was the employee group that was behind the planning on this, very good. Thank you so very much for your work, thank you. Councilmember Loman.
So, there's one thing that maybe we might want to do, that the new councilmember may want to introduce his family.
You should have caught me earlier, councilmember.
Well, you know, I missed it, and the other councilmembers got it.
Councilmember Mua, could you please introduce us to your family?
Thank you, Mayor. My wife just stepped out. That's okay, she's with my youngest son Frederick, and my oldest Theodore is laughing along with his cousins there. And then I have my mom here tonight, her name is Yer Mua, and my sister Marie. There they are.
I'm sorry for the oversight, we should have introduced your family as we move forward here, I apologize for that, so. Very nice to meet you all. Thanks for being here tonight. I hope you're very proud of our newest councilmember, I know we are. Moving on to item 2.3 on our agenda is an overview of the I-494 Corridor Commission. And I believe Melissa Madison from the 494 Corridor Commission, she's the executive director, is here to give us the overview. Good evening and welcome, and Glenn Markergard is going to introduce this, and this holds a special place in my heart because this is one of the first commissions that I was on as a councilmember here in Bloomington, was on the 494 Corridor Commission. Learned a lot and about how things work and met a lot of great people, so, Mr. Markergard, please.
Yes, Mayor Bussie, councilmembers, good evening, Councilmember Mua, good evening. I would like to introduce Melissa Madison. Melissa is executive director of the 494 Corridor Commission, which is a joint powers organization founded by the City of Bloomington along with Partner Communities back in 1986. And Melissa has been with the commission 21 years now. She is a national expert on transportation demand management, and we're very lucky to have her with the Corridor Commission, so I'll turn it over to Melissa.
Thank you, those are kind words, thank you so much. Good evening. Very nice to see you again, Mayor Bussie, and councilmembers Carter and Martin and Alessandro, thank you for your service on the Corridor Commission, and it's nice to be in front of you to tell you a little bit about what we've been doing and to take any questions that you have. So, I know this is a shorter presentation, and there's more that we do, it's hard to put it all into a short presentation, so I'd be happy to take any questions that you have. So, as Glenn mentioned, the Corridor Commission formed back in 1986 to work together with the cities of Richfield, Bloomington, Edina, Eden Prairie, and Minnetonka, and at that time, also Plymouth, to work on traffic congestion on 494 and the, both the benefits and some of the challenges that that presents to the cities with especially cut-through traffic that I know you have a lot of conversations about. And could we do the next slide? So, just a little bit of information about the 494 corridor that our member cities are a part of. There are 19% of the metro area population lives along the corridor, with 21% of metro area jobs on or near the corridor. So, there's actually over 313,000 jobs on or near the corridor, which is more than both downtown Minneapolis and downtown St. Paul combined. And the Corridor Commission had done a study of commute behavior on 494 to find out what are people doing for their mode to get to work. And 95% replied that they drive alone, 4% carpool, and 1% bicycle and take transit. And in the same survey, we found that 30% were willing to try carpooling, and another 30% were open to trying transit. And so, the Corridor Commission then hired our staff, which we go by the program name of commuter services, so that we could, can we advance to the next slide? So that we could go out and work with employers to reach the commuters to give them alternatives to driving alone. And so, commuter services, sometimes we're referred to as the 494 TMO. We are one of five TMOs in the region, and TMO stands for Transportation Management Organization. There is an Anoka County TMO, a downtown Minneapolis TMO, a St. Paul TMO, and then the 494 TMO. So, we primarily work through employers to reach commuters, and we have been told that we can use our main federal funding grant called CMAC, Congestion Mitigation Air Quality. We can use that now not only to do employer and commuter outreach, but to help people with all essential trips that they need to take. So, for example, people who need to go to a medical appointment or to the grocery store, et cetera, so not just confined to the commute any longer. But in the past, we have focused a lot of our outreach through employers. We do about 100 to 130 onsite commuter fairs each year with large and medium-sized employers as well as multi-tenant properties. And we provide a number of free resources to employers. We provide displays that have the transit routes that serve that employer location, and in the displays, we have bicycle commuting tips for biking in traffic, as well as the Guaranteed Ride Home program, and how to find a carpool or a vanpool. And we provide free outdoor bike racks to an employer who needs one, as long as they're willing to work with us to promote all alternative modes such as carpooling and transit as well. And we manage preferential carpool parking for employers. There's 26 employers that we're managing that for, and you'll see a couple of slides where the Mall of America and Normandale Lake Office Park, as well as Normandale Community College are all utilizing our services to manage their preferential carpool parking programs. We hold commuter fairs, as I mentioned, and we hold luncheon learns for employees to learn about different topics, so when there's a large construction project, we do a luncheon learn to provide, or Mindot will speak with us and give the construction update, and then we'll tag team and give information about alternatives to driving alone. And then, we have deep, vast resources for telework and hybrid working arrangements. We were able to create the brand Twin Cities Telework with funding that we received last year, and we have specific resources for employers, for managers of the teleworkers, and then also the teleworkers themselves. We survey employers on a quarterly basis, could we go to the next slide? And in the surveys, we ask what type of resources, in addition to what we already are providing, would be helpful to you. And we learned from the employers, they want training for managers to manage remote and hybrid workers, and so we've delivered on that with webinars and articles and resources, especially on how to measure productivity and how to continue communication and connectivity when teams are now dispersed. And employers wanted home office and ergonomic safety information, so we delivered that with a webinar and also a resource, and they wanted mental health tips for their teleworkers, and so we have resources for that. In the past year, we were able to assist over 330 employers with telework and hybrid work resources, and I put the Twin Cities Telework website on there. I changed the font color for the TC so that that stands out, so it's tctelwork.com. And just to give you a couple slides on representative work that we do, so I'm only putting in three slides with employers that we work with, but we do work with over 1,200. So, this will give you an idea of what we are doing out in the community. So, for Normandale Community College, we administer their universal pass, which provides free transit to any and all students, seven days a week for unlimited transit rides. And Normandale also subsidizes the Metro Pass, which is a deeply discounted transit pass program for their faculty and staff, and we manage preferential carpool parking for them. They have locations all around their campus because students don't all necessarily go in the main entrance, and we have permanent transit and commuting kiosks in multiple locations in their campus. There's a display with real-time next bus information, so students can know how many minutes wait it will be for the next bus to arrive, which is very helpful. And we are onsite at Normandale Community College the first five days of every semester, and then they invite us on campus all throughout each semester for special events. And at the Mall of America, we wrote their TDM plan, and TDM stands for Transportation Demand Management, or you'll sometimes hear it also referred to as Travel Demand Management. So, we actually helped the City of Bloomington write your TDM ordinance many years back. And there is a commuter team inside the Mall of America staff. The mall subsidizes Metro Pass pre-tax for employees, and they too offer preferential carpool parking. They have different amenities for people who are bicycle commuting, and they also have a display of the routes that serve the Mall of America and carpooling Guaranteed Ride Home, and the pictures of the, at the time, the commute programs coordinator at the mall. And then, with Normandale Lake Office Park, we hold commuter fairs year-round, and we hold try-it campaigns for, and the try-it campaigns are not just exclusive to Normandale Lake Office Park, but to any commuter resident and employer in our area, where we make it easy for people to try something other than driving alone for a chance to win a desirable prize such as an electric bicycle. And the property manager also purchases five commuter bicycles each year as a special prize for their tenants who participate in our try-it campaigns. We hold onsite bicycle tune-up events with Normandale Lake Office Park and manage their preferential carpool parking. And in their tenant newsletter, we are able to put in articles about commuting and doing so sustainably, and we are there to hold luncheon learns on a regular basis, as well as we keep them apprised of road construction projects. And so, that was a bit about what we do with employers, and also, another segment of our work, I think the most important part, is providing individualized commute assistance, and we call that our ultimate commute concierge service. So, we do ride matching for helping people find someone to carpool with or to join or start a vanpool. We do a customized transit package for people where we take their home address and the destination address and tell them what the, provide an itinerary of, catch the transit at this location if they have to make a transfer, we give them the right schedules and two free passes so they can give it a try. And we have deep resources for bicycle commuting with the, we provide free copies of the Hennepin County Bike Trail map, tips on biking in traffic, and the Minnesota bike laws. And then, one of the best-kept secrets, I think, in the Twin Cities is the Guaranteed Ride Home program, which is offered through the Metropolitan Council. It provides people who use an alternative to driving alone for their commute, if they're doing so three or more days per week, they are eligible for up to $100 per year in taxi ride reimbursements or Uber and Lyft reimbursements as a safety net. So, for example, if one is carpooling and they receive a call from school that their child is sick, they have the safety net of the Guaranteed Ride Home that they can take a taxi, Uber, or Lyft and be reimbursed for that expense up to however many times until they reach the $100 mark in a year. And then, deep resources, as I mentioned, for telework and hybrid work arrangements. Next slide, please. So, that's just another way to package it, the ultimate commute concierge, and our resources are available in multiple languages. And in an average year, if we could go to the next slide, in an average year, these are the results, so when we help someone with finding a carpool partner or transit or bicycle commuting resources, we ask them at the time that we're helping them, what is your current mode for getting to work? And so, we capture that, and then we survey afterward, after we've provided the resources to find out, were you able to try the mode or modes that we gave you assistance with? And 13% indicate that they switch from driving alone to using the alternative five days per week, and 27% report that they switch to three or more days per week, on down to the metrics of two days per week, one day per week occasionally. And so, that adds up to over 5,000, just under 6,000, drive-alone commuters who switch to using a sustainable commute mode three or more days per week after receiving customized assistance from our staff. three or more days per week after receiving customized assistance from our staff. And that results in... Next slide, please. An estimated 56 million vehicle miles avoided as a direct result of commuter services outreach. The 56 million vehicle miles avoided is the equivalent of 23,234 metric tons of CO2 emissions saved. Next slide, please. And it would take over a million mature trees to reduce the same amount of CO2 emissions. The city of Bloomington's membership in the Corridor Commission allows every resident, every commuter, and every employer access to our resources and services. We work with over 1,200 employers and over 6,000 commuters each year. And new this year, because we're now able to help people with essential trips... Next slide, please. We are able to promote the residential pass. And the residential pass... Next slide, please. Is sold in bulk. It's transit passes to multifamily owners and property managers, where each unit receives one pass. And the occupants of the unit can share the pass. So roommates can share the pass, family members can share the pass. And the price is only $14 per month for unlimited transit rides. And next slide, please. So we've reached out to 568 multifamily properties, the majority of them in Bloomington, actually. So we've done this outreach in the past couple of months. And it... The multifamily units have to be at least 10 or more units in order to qualify for residential pass. And so we're out there, meeting with the property owners that are interested. And together, we achieve meaningful results. Thank you for your membership in the 494 Corridor Commission. And we work with many of your wonderful city staff members on a regular basis. It's a pleasure to work with them. You have, I think, the most phenomenal employees. Thank you so much, and I'll stand for questions.
Well, thank you, Ms. Madison. That comprehensive overview, appreciated. Council questions? Councilmember DeLisandro.
Thanks for being here. It's nice to see you in person. Most of the Zoom calls, you know, it's always nice to have an alternative. Do you have off the top of your head any knowledge about what percentage of Normandale community colleges students are commuting there using your services? I was just kind of curious if it's gone up or down in recent years.
Well, it has gone down because of the pandemic. But prior to the pandemic, there was... I believe it was 29% of the student body and faculty and staff were using an alternative to driving alone. But I will double-check and send a follow-up email if that's okay.
Yeah, that's totally fine. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Council, additional questions? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions here. I actually was fascinated by that Uber, Lyft, taxi guarantee. My question on that is, what happens with the bike? Do they have the capability to take the bike back to your property as well?
Well, actually, so the ability to use Guaranteed Ride Home for biking has kind of gone back and forth. It's ebbed and flowed with policy decision-makers sometimes not allowing people who bicycle commute for, I believe, the reason of needing to put the bicycle in the taxi, the Uber or the Lyft. But Guaranteed Ride Home is also allowed on all transit so that someone could put their bike on the bus and be reimbursed for the cost of the transit trip. But... But currently, you can bicycle and be in the Guaranteed Ride Home program, and you would lift your own bicycle into the vehicle.
Okay. This is not something you have now, but something to consider in the future is some type of bike repair service. I know people lose a tire and things like that. The last question I had was regarding safety. I know there's been a number of concerns with regards, particularly to the trains and things of that nature. Can you give us an explanation of what's happening there to help people feel safer riding some of the transit options?
Well, I would wish to defer to Metro Transit, who could do a much better job explaining what they have implemented. But I know they have additional officers, both in uniform and undercover. And there are cameras now on the bus routes and on light rail platforms. So I don't feel very qualified to answer that question. I apologize if that's not sufficient. Those are the resources that I'm aware of.
Council, anything additional? Councilmember Muwa?
Thank you. When you talk about reaching out to multifamily homes, is there like a limit to the distance away they have to live from the 494 corridor? Or is it, if your city is part of this committee, they were allowed to utilize that?
Yes, every resident in the city of Bloomington, every person who commutes into a job in Bloomington, every employer and every multifamily residential property all has access to use all of our services free of charge.
Thank you.
Anything else, council? Well, Ms. Madison, thank you for spending the time with us this evening. Thanks for the information, and thanks for your leadership in this for more than two decades. That's an impressive run. And I know that this organization is very well-respected, both among the cities, certainly at the Capitol. I think it carries a loud and influential voice. And so appreciate your leadership on that and appreciate the work that has been done and will continue to be done.
Thank you kindly. And Mr. Mayor, may I let the council know that in your packet is the copy of the 2023 legislative platform of the Corridor Commission, which has, we highlight road projects and transit, and light rail and BRT projects, as well as bicycle commuting projects in the legislative platform. Thank you so much for the opportunity to come back and see you.
Absolutely. And speaking of projects, I'm assuming the plans are underway for when the 494 project actually begins, how to manage and mitigate and get people from point A to point B with the least amount of headaches possible.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So that will actually start in 2023. And we'll carry forward the first phase of the project through 2027. And then we'll see phases two, three, and four after that. So probably into my retirement, this project will be going on. But we are here to help people use an alternative to driving alone during the construction and any and all times.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, council, is item 2.4, which is, we're going to start our board and commission appointments. And but first, item 2.4, I wanted to hear a bit from Emily Larson, from our Community Outreach and Engagement Coordinator, who herded all the cats on a Saturday not too long ago to make this all happen. And just to give us an overview of the work that went on, the extensive work that went on and the decisions, how the process played itself out, so which led to the recommendations by each of the interview panels for appointments to these boards and commissions. So, good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And members of the city council. Good to be with you tonight. I know we spent some time together a few weeks ago for this interview process. And so I'm just here to provide a brief overview of what we do to reach this point. So we received over... We received exactly four to five applications for five different boards and commissions. That deadline was in December. And then coordinated interviews in the month of January. We had each of you, with the exception of the newly... The newest member, Councilmember Muwa. Everybody else participated in this process, which was great. And we also had representatives from each board or commission with openings. Due to the number of applications, we had four simultaneous panels that were interviewing on a Saturday. And so just about 40 people were interviewed that day. Interviews are not required to be appointed to a board or commission. So if a applicant was not able to interview, they were provided with alternative options or their application was reviewed during an open interview time slot. After the interviews were completed, the panels participated in a debrief discussion. So members of the council alongside the representatives from boards and commissions. And those discussions were facilitated by staff from the Community Outreach and Engagement Division. And that time was used to develop a recommendation. And so today, all of you who served on a panel will be invited to share what stood out to you from that recommendation and provide context to those who served on a different panel. Because not each member was able to interview each applicant, just in the interest of numbers. And so I'll be here in the room if any questions arise. But at this time, I'd like to turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor, to walk through those recommendations. And then I will look forward to seeing the appointments.
Thank you. And thank you much for your work in all this. I know it was not a small task. And it actually, despite the long hours on that Saturday, it went very smoothly. And so I appreciate the work that you put in and the thought that you went in, that you put into this to make this as transparent and comprehensive and fair and understandable as possible. So, well done. Thank you for that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you to all of you who served on that Saturday. It was an incredible amount of work, and so I'm grateful for your time as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council, what I would like to do... We had four panels that actually interviewed for five different commissions. And so what I would like to do is go through the different commissions or boards, one by one, and call on the council member who served on that board, that interview board. And basically, to just give the quick overview, the interviews that took place, the, I think we have listed here, the priorities or perspectives importance for the work that was going to be done. And then whoever that council member was who served on that, if you could then, if you are comfortable to move forward with the recommended appointments to the board or commission that you did serve on. So we will start with our Advisory Board of Health. And Councilmember Carter, you actually get two this time. You get sustainability a little later in the game, but you were the council member serving on the Advisory Board of Health. If you could please, you had four openings, you had five applicants. If you could please, just kind of give us a brief overview of the work that went on and then answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Mayor. So we... So again, this is for the Advisory Board of Health. We had four openings, and we had five applicants. We actually did initially have six, but one candidate withdrew from consideration. And we needed to have one consumer member and three provider members. And just as a note, a provider can serve in the consumer spot. And a provider is pretty broadly defined as anybody who is involved in the health services profession. So just so you all know that. When we discussed kind of some of the key priorities or perspectives, we really wanted to have people join the commission who brought some data expertise, maybe worked at a healthcare provider or a healthcare system. If possible, have a renter voice. Make sure we're having geographic distribution across the city. We wanted to make sure that the folks who get nominated brought health equity fluency and cultural competency, a commitment to public engagement. And then we also were looking for people who were really thinking about, you know, how could we partner and collaborate with other entities and organizations? Another key consideration for us was that two people in current leadership positions on the Advisory Board of Health, so the chair and the vice chair, were up for reappointment. And so we recognize that, you know, if they were not to be reappointed, there would be kind of a gap in leadership in the advisory board. So our recommendation was to reappoint Starr Sage and Jasmine Swinnick in Bedford. So those two individuals are in the vice chair and the chair position on the Advisory Board of Health currently. And we are asking that they be appointed to the three-year terms. We are also recommending appointment of Adam Carvell for the vacant two-year term, and then Leah Wells for the expired three-year term. So now I have to figure out what that actually means in these motions. I don't think it matters too much, other than I need to make sure Adam Carvell is in the...
That was listed correctly. Council, any questions of Councilmember Carter regarding the Advisory Board of Health? Councilmember Loman?
So my only question is, given the recommendations that are here, did the entire panel feel strongly about these recommendations?
Yes, yep. There was 100% consensus.
Thank you.
If the council is comfortable, given the interviews that took place and the recommendations by the interview panels, rather than voting on each individual, to vote on them based on the recommendations of the panel, if everybody's comfortable with that, I think that would be the most logical step forward here on this. So Councilmember Carter, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I would move that we approve the recommendation from the interview committee for the Advisory Board of Health.
And so those officially would be to appoint, is that Starr Sage and Jasmine Swinnick in Bedford to the provider seats for the March 1st, 2023, to the February 28th, 2026, seats on the Advisory Board of Health. To appoint Adam Carvell to the Advisory Board of Health from March 1st, 2023, to February 28th, 2025, so the two-year seat. And then appoint Leah Wells to the three-year seat, to the consumer member seat, from March 1st, 2023, to February 28th, 2026, on the Advisory Board of Health. We have a motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to accept the Advisory Board recommendation or the Interview Board recommendations for appointments to the Advisory Board of Health as stated. Ms. Manderscheid, have we got that correct?
He just flipped them.
Questions on that? Council, we're comfortable? Any further questions? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations to the folks who have been appointed to the Advisory Board of Health. We'll move on to our Creative Placemaking Commission. And we had the honor of serving on that along with Councilmember Loman. Councilmember Loman, if you could take us through the work of the Creative Placemaking Commission?
Yeah, there was a lot of work to be done with... I thought we had 13 or 14 folks that had come through, that applied for four positions. And I wanted to say that, just to everyone who applied, and I think the mayor would agree with me, this was really a difficult conversation and decision. One of the things I want to make sure that, you know, I think the council knows, but just the public knows, is that, you know, we are working towards a citywide creative placemaking starting this year. And we asked about what a number of the applicants thought would be opportunities that they'd see with that. And it really generated some very interesting conversations with respect to that. And so we were able to, after we went through a number of the questions, were there able to come to really like four ideas that we saw that were of import to the creative placemaking within the city. One is looking for active artists, current with what is going on in the city and aware of the public art, especially if we're planning on trying to spread this across the city. It makes sense if they were aware of kind of what was going on here with respect to the city. And then familiarity with social media, and also just the processes which lie with our... You know, with respect to our new strategic priorities. There were some other things that we looked for and we weren't able to find just throughout, just with the applicants that we got. But the ones that we're moving forward with today, I think will really, at least the panel all thought as well, that they would really help move this creative placemaking piece forward, you know, in terms of either their perspective or their wisdom and experience, either having served on the commission before, or some of the creative ideas that they brought forward with respect to social media. We've got another person who's got that great Bloomington Leadership Program alum experience that we wanted to move forward with. And just any number of items that we have listed here in the public packet here. And I could go on for hours, but I won't do that. I'm going to stop. Because you may have some questions, and I'd be happy to answer those, or the mayor would be happy to answer them. But I think these are the, and I think we all as a group, of the many who are here that went forward, we're putting forward these four here. Douglas Bruce, Julia Gustafson, Mark Fabel, Paul Coates. Those would be the four that we are putting forward.
Council, questions of Councilmember Loman? Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So just looking at the packet in the kind of the blue section, which candidates would have the greatest impact? There are actually five. So Anna Stinson was included. And I see that you had Anna and Mark... So, Anna Stinson was included, and I see that you had Anna and Mark kind of next to each other, kind of the connection with the business community. So, what was it that made you choose Mark over Anna? And I see that you said, appoint Anna if, for some reason, one of the other candidates is not able to fill a seat, but I'm curious how you made that decision, or how the commission, or the interview group...
I'm trying to remember exactly. I think, I think really what I would say is that when we looked at, at both of these, we, we, it was just kind of just so slightly that, that Mark really brought forward in his, his interview, I'm trying to figure out what the best way is to say this, just, just his knowledge and, and background would provide the commission with a very strong, I mean, if there was a fifth position, we would definitely take them both. But Mark just brought a, you know, in terms of the items that are mentioned there, just ever so slightly, you know, just that seemed to come out better in the, in the presentation.
And, and if I would add, so Mark has served on the Creative Placemaking, Creative Placemaking Commission in the past, and so understood the, the background, understood the process, understood what has been done, and had good ideas about what could be done going forward now that it's moving citywide. And he brings an interesting perspective, working with a development corporation, company, thinking of ways, looking at ways to connect the business community to the work that we're trying to do from a creative placemaking perspective as well. No, it was a difficult decision. I, I will agree, it's been, there were, there were a number of really good folks here, and we had a long discussion on this, and eventually settled on the four that we did. But it was, like, like many of the discussions we've been having recently, it's not an easy decision to make, it really is not. Counsel, any other questions? Councilmember DeLisandro?
More of a general question, Mr. Mayor. Is the, what is the total number of folks on the Creative Placemaking Commission today? What is that total body?
No, I believe, Emily, can you help us here? I believe it's nine, and I, it's one of, it's a unique commission in Bloomington, in that five of the nine members are required to be Bloomington residents, so we can have up to four members who are not Bloomington residents, because of the perspective that they can bring, either from an artistic perspective, or a, a business development perspective, or something along those lines.
Well, the reason I'm asking the question, Mr. Mayor, is if, if it meant that, would it, would it be, would it be interesting to the commission to expand its size to accommodate more perspectives, given that it's now going to be citywide? So, if you had 13 members as opposed to nine members, because now you're citywide, or something to that effect? So, that, that was more the question than anything, I'm just curious if that came up as part of the discussion?
It, it did not, but I think that, that's a good discussion. I, I will say it's, it's a good discussion, and I don't know if it's appropriate for, for tonight, and for now, for this appointment, but I, I agree with you, if we're, if the group is going to expand citywide as opposed to just in the South Loop area, I think that, that makes good sense. That's a good suggestion. Mr. Verbogi?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Councilmember DeLisandro's staff is already working on a review of the Creative Placemaking Commission and the ordinance that established it, just because it's been a while since we have revisited that, and also recognizing this one's also a little different, because we have another body that appoints people to this commission besides the City Council, and that's Artistry. So, we're reviewing the structure of the commission, and we'll look at that when we do that. Thank you.
Counsel, additional questions? Did we get all that right? Emily?
Mr. Mayor, you are correct, there are nine members.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Hearing no other counsel questions or discussion on this? Councilmember Loman, if you'd be willing to make a, a motion?
Be happy to move that, move to appoint Mark Fable to a term of March 1st, 2023, to February 28th, 2026. Move to appoint Julie Gustafson to a term from March 1st, 2023, to February 28th, 2026. And then, in terms of the vacant pieces, move to appoint Paul Coat to a term of March 1st, 2023, to February 28th, 2025, and then appoint Douglas Bruce to a term from March 1st, 2023, to February 28th, 2025.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Motion by Councilmember Loman, second by Councilmember Martin, to make the appointments to the Creative Placemaking Commission as recommended by the interview panels and as stated. Any further counsel discussion on this? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next up are the appointments to our Human Rights Commission. And there, I'm going to turn to Councilmember Nelson, who was part of the interview panel for the Human Rights Commission. Councilmember Nelson?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, we interviewed a great group of people there that are very passionate about this community and making sure everyone feels included. We had two individuals, Molly Bosu and Anita Smithson, that have served in leadership positions, Chair, Vice Chair, have been before the council in the past. And then there was one other individual, oh, back to them, you know, they, they seem to be in a good position to continue to serve there. They have the trust of staff and their colleagues there. The other person that really stood out from people was Heather Commenson, apologize if I mispronounced names, broad-based experience with various people that are underrepresented or part of the DEI area, and works directly with many people, has been in leadership positions in organizations within the community, helping to assist people to achieve their best potential, to take advantage of the opportunities that are available to them. And she just, that broad-based experience with so many different areas, whether it be disability, whether it be race, whether it be LGBTQI+, was frankly quite overwhelming. She's, she's in a really good spot to help the commission, I believe, and so I just open up to my colleagues if they have any questions.
Counsel, any questions of Councilmember Nelson regarding the appointments and the process underway to appoint to the Human Rights Commission? No questions? Councilmember Nelson, I'd look for a, a motion, please.
I would move to appoint Molly Bosu, Heather Commenson, and Anita Smithson to a term from March 1st, 2023, to February 28th, 2026, on the Human Rights Commission.
Second?
Motion by Councilmember Nelson, second by Councilmember Carter, to make appointments to the Human Rights Commission as recommended by the interview panel and as stated. Any further discussion on this, counsel? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next up is the appointment to the Park Arts and Recreation Commission, and we had both Councilmember DeLisandro and Councilmember Martin served on that interview panel. So, I will leave it to you two to fight it out as to who takes which part of this whole thing. Councilmember Martin? Councilmember Martin?
Boy, I'm putting that on LinkedIn, the senior member. I, I was very impressed with the group of applicants that we had, especially because it not only represented really great geographic diversity, which as Potty's talked about quite a bit, but also coming from the perspective of small business owners, folks that are bringing in the arts perspective, which is great to have kind of across our commissions, and additionally, not only folks with small kids, but especially folks that work in the capacity as an outdoor educator, and being able to maybe help shape some of the programming that we offer moving forward. So, while we, as, as has been said, while we had a lot of really promising applicants, we narrowed that down to a group of six or so. And out of our, our recommendations for appointment, Julie Gustafson and Jonathan Minx, excuse me, it looks like we, Julie's very popular and was appointed elsewhere. So, we came up with another very wonderful applicant, Nicole Abraham, that we were going to put forward as a great person to have on the commission as well. And happy to field any questions.
Counsel, questions of Councilmember Martin, or Councilmember DeLisandro? Councilmember DeLisandro, do you have anything to add?
No, I think that this is, this is great. I, I would agree, we had two or three members of this pa, this group of, of candidates that were also on other commissions, and as, as you can see, Julie was already appointed one place, Paul Coat was appointed one place. So, then that narrowed us down quite a bit, because we kind of knew that was happening as well, and so we had in our back pockets the option for Nicole, and we're very excited for that perspective. It's always good when you can get a good group of people from both the arts and the park recreation user groups as well.
And it's always good to have somebody in your back pocket as well, in case you happen to need one. And I think that's a, a good compromise or a good way of doing this, considering Julie's going to be working elsewhere, and to open it up to as many folks as possible. I like that, I appreciate that, so. Counsel, any questions? If not, Councilmember Martin, I'd look for a motion.
Mayor, I will move that we appoint Jonathan Minx to a term from March 1st, 2023, to February 28th, 2026, on the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission, and appoint Nicole Abraham to a term from March 1st, 2023, to February 29th, 2024, on the Parks Arts and Recreation Commission.
Second?
We have a motion by Councilmember Martin, and second by Councilmember DeLisandro, to make the appointments to the Park Arts and Recreation Commission as stated and as recommended by the interview panel. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. And our final commission appointments of the evening are for the Sustainability Commission. We're going to go back to Councilmember Carter, who served on that, that, that interview panel actually did interviews for two different commissions, so I appreciate the work that you put in. Councilmember Carter?
Thank you, Mayor. So, for the Sustainability Commission, there were four openings and five applicants. Two of the applicants were seeking reappointment. And then in our decision-making, one of the four appointments had to be a technical expert in one or more areas of sustainability. So, we are recommending the reappointment of Stephanie Owen and David Drummond. They both are very strong members of the commission currently. Stephanie has a strong background in solar and sustainable energy, and she's working on a solar project currently in Bloomington. So, of course, we want to see that continue with her leadership. David is exceptionally knowledgeable about alternative transportation, specifically biking, and so appreciate having that continued expertise. And then we are also recommending the appointment of Anthony, or Tony Comer, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing your last name, to the Sustainability Commission for the full term. And he brings an advocacy background, has experience with outreach and activism around sustainability issues, and is also a recent graduate from the Bloomington Leadership Program. And then we are also recommending the appointment of Sarah Cobb to the vacant term.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Councilmembers, any questions or comments? Anything to add to this discussion on the Sustainability Commission? Councilmember Loman?
Well, I just want to say, I have had the opportunity to work with the, the two folks that we're reappointing, and I'm glad to see that, that they had a great interview, and they're, are phenomenal to have on the commission. One question I did want to ask, in terms of, this is probably the, the least I've seen apply for the commission, in terms of the, the appointments that we're making, do we feel that we have, you know, the strongest pool here to move forward with priorities that we have with regard to the commission?
That's a great question. We did discuss that, because several individuals commented on the very low number of applicants. So, again, we did discuss it, but we did feel like the people who reapplied or applied were still great candidates. And so I do think this is something that we need to pay attention to for the next round, when we have an open seat, because I think in the past, they've had 10 plus, right, per seat. And so this number was pretty surprising to folks. So, again, something, we, we definitely noted it as something to pay attention to, but we also felt confident in the individuals that were recommending for appointment.
Additional questions, counsel? Hearing none? Councilmember Carter, I would look for a motion.
Okay, so, I would move to appoint Stephanie Owen, David Drummond, and Anthony Comer to the terms from March 1st, 2023, to February 28th, 2026, to the Sustainability Commission. Do I have to do them separately?
No, you can do it all at once, here.
And then appointing Sarah Cobb for the term March 1st, 2023, to February 29th, 2024, on the Sustainability Commission.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Carter, second by Councilmember Muah, to make the appointments to the Sustainability Commission as stated and as recommended by the interview panel. No further counsel discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Well, once again, thank you to our coed team for the, the outreach and the engagement, the recruiting, the, the cat herding, the managing, doing well with the interviews, and, and then kind of leading us all through this. This was, I think, a very strong process, and I think the number of folks that we have and the quality of people that we have, it's a, it's a good problem to have, and I think it's, a lot of the work that you do adds to that. People know what to expect, and they come into it with their eyes open, and, and they understand what we're doing and why. And so, thank you for doing that. Counsel, thank you for your time spent on that Saturday. I think it means a lot, it says a lot, when each member of the City Council is willing to spend six hours on a Saturday doing these interviews, to make sure that the folks on these boards and commissions are the best possible folks. Councilmember Loman and I, we always laugh, I can remember a time when, early in my council career, when we actually had to call and recruit people to apply, when we literally had no applicants for the boards and commissions, and really had to recruit people to get them involved. And so to be where we are now is a testament to the work that we've put in from a process standpoint, and I think from a commitment from a, a council and a, a, a leadership standpoint, that this is what we're going to do, and this is how we're going to do it, and we want the best people to come forward. So, thank you all so very much, I greatly, greatly appreciate it. Councilmember Carter, you got a question?
It wasn't a question, I just wanted to kind of echo your comments, if I may.
Please.
I know when, before I started on City Council, I had applied to a commission seat, and it was super unclear, it was hard to apply, I didn't know what the timeline was. And then I know in my first year, we talked a lot about how this can be done better, and the coed team brought forward this process, and it's been continued to be refined. And I just think the clarity, the transparency, it's more equitable, it's just such a, a great process. And then I also appreciate that you send out surveys afterwards, and you ask people how we can continue to improve it. And so, just want to thank you very much, because it really, not saying negative things about people who ran it in the past or whatever, but it's just improved so significantly, so thank you.
Well done, and these are important appointments that we make. These are, these are important boards and commissions, and they take on some meaty issues, and we rely on them quite a bit. So, to have them as strong as possible benefits us and benefits the city in so, so many ways. So, thank you, thank you all, counsel. Our final item under our introductory items is item 2.10, which is an update on the Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan, and I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Verbogi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. Mr. Sable is going to do the presentation. I know he's getting his slide deck ready to go, so he asked me to filibuster for a minute, which is always dangerous. So, we wanted to provide a check-in with the council, we've been intending to come back here for a couple months. Work has been happening to advance the Bloomington Tomorrow Together Strategic Plan in a couple of areas. One, in terms of the actual work that's going to be done for the, you know, based on the plan itself, but also to make sure that the plan is one that is accessible to the public and that has very clear measurements associated with it. So, a lot of the work over the last couple months has been building that structure for how we're going to measure it, how our staff is going to connect to that work, and then how we report that out to the community. So, that's a good amount of what Mr. Sable is going to talk about today, and he has his presentation up and ready to go, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
Thank you, Mr. Verbogi. Mr. Sable, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Mike Sable, Assistant City Manager. This update is intended to be somewhat brief, but it's also going to be more structural in nature, but as I just want to remind the community and the, and the council of the mission to cultivate an enduring and remarkable community where people want to be, we have heard that tonight, as a matter of fact. And so, it's one of those good reminders, it's, it's an important piece. And I also wanted to then reference the core values, that these really are the base, form the basis for the community-based strategic plan, which again, I think Bloomington's approach to strategic planning was significantly different than what you would experience in most communities. Usually that's a collection of council and staff, this included 400 members of the community led by Diane Kirby and her team, and coordinating that, and really wrestling with the core values in the community. And I, I won't read these, but they are really central to how we have thought about this plan. These were the three strategic objectives that were supposed to be met by 2030, and they are, from a traditional sort of project management standpoint, they're, they're, some of the language is not as specific as a staff member who is on the field and in the, you know, providing direct service can, can align with. And so the word that I've been using for the last several weeks is around alignment. How do the staff know when they're working in the community? How do they know that the work they're doing is connecting to the strategic objectives? And what we have done, we've had a team of about 40 people trying to unpack and repack and, and organize this work, and we have really centered on three sort of central components. One, that first strategic objective is really about a connected and welcoming community. We will prioritize physical and relational connections between residents, community groups, and staff. And really, this is around fostering connection, both at the human level, but also then... And really, this is around fostering connection, both at the human level, but also then the things that we control, often at the infrastructure level. So we can build trails, we can connect people to parks, we can use roadway networks to connect people, and that when we, the community-led outcomes of connected neighbors who are welcomed by the city and valued by the community, it really is a launching point. And so we've tried to reframe that first one to be around connected and welcoming. And then with each of these things, there are three outcomes. And so, one of the three outcomes that we've identified is that residents can connect with their neighbors. We know that when people are having a hard time in life, if they have a connection to a social club, or a family, and their community, they can really withstand almost any kind of crisis. And so, really connecting with neighbors, that proximal relationship really matters. We also want to make sure that people are welcomed into the community by the city. And so you saw the Welcome to Bloomington initiative came right out of this work. And so this is, that's one of those examples. And then the people are feeling, expressing that they're feeling valued by the community. It's an important piece, and the things that we can work on as staff, but also really in partnership with the community around helping people feel valued. The second strategic objective that you saw earlier, for us, we've really kind of centered on a healthy and resilient community that captures that environmental component, but it also captures the health of the people in the community as a whole. And really, it's around healthy environment, healthy humans, and also safety and security. Our police department does a terrific job in the community, well-regarded, well-respected. And so that, those three components then really make for a healthy and resilient community. And we've identified those three outcomes then, improved environmental health, improved human health, and increased safety and security. And as staff, this is some of the language that we use, and we can get excited about, because we can, we think we can take some initiatives and actions to actually drive those metrics and those three things. And so while we appreciate the work of the core planning team, this really translating it into staff language that they can really respond to was an important part for us. The third strategic objective is really this community with equitable economic growth. And this was a really central part of the core planning teamwork. And this is where we're really prioritizing policies, programs, and projects that really drive economic opportunity. And I'll, you know, I know that Director Carla Henderson is behind me, and we can talk about the Small Business Resource Center that she is making reality, and sort of, what we do recognize is that there's often things that we miss as government, and so we've also done changes to how we procure services, to make sure that we're reaching diverse audiences, that small minority women-owned businesses in Bloomington get access to our contracts earlier, and having this work. And this is a really important one for us, and it really does support the work that Faith Jackson has done with both the Race Equity Business Plan, but also the Race Equity Strategic Plan. We kind of, we talk often internally about having a dual track, doing stuff inside the organization and doing things outside the organization with the community. These are the dual tracks. And this language about a community with equitable economic growth is really important. And again, this is, we would love to see growth equitably distributed. We know that there is an income gap in median wages between East Bloomington and West Bloomington. It's a sizable gap, it has been growing over time. We can measure that progress and start to track to see that, those changes. We also want to see expanded diversity in business ownership, and then job growth, again, equitably distributed in the community. So for next steps, structurally, this is how the staff have created this component, and it's the three priority areas that we've outlined before. Each of them have three outcomes, so a total of nine outcomes. And we've really identified 24 city-related projects, and it will still be partnered with community, but really city initiatives that are going to be driving those changes. And we've identified 32 targets that we think can help us tell the story, so that the community knows that we're making improvement in some of these efforts. And so you're going to see these targets and these initiatives brought forward, highlighted really clearly about how they're supporting the work of the city council. And then one of the things that we're really excited about is a community dashboard that we're going to put together. And I'm going to give you a sample, and this is related to the healthy environment. We have a lot of initiatives that are out there already in existence with the Energy Action Plan, the Solid Waste Reduction Plan. And then we've really set some really clear targets. And so we can hold that target out to the community and say, this is what we think we're going to do by when, and then we can measure our progress and report on that. And our intent then is to have a quarterly report to the city council on all of these initiatives, once the system is up and running. And I think it's a way for us to hold, be accountable to the goals that you have set, but also be really transparent to the community about what that looks like. And I wanted to give just a, like, this is a very short sample, but all of those dropdown menus about a connected and welcoming community would list out the outcomes, and then list out some of the initiatives, and then the charts like this would also help us tell the story. Emma Strass and her team have done, I think they've been ahead of the curve in a lot of this work, and so this tends to be the first thing that we can run with. But these types of live dashboards with targets that the community can then, these would be interactive, they could click on them, they can then also see what the work plan looks like, so we can actually really have, from a staff perspective, line of sight to what the community and the city council finds important. And this is a really exciting opportunity. And I rushed through that, but I will say, I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update. The community-based strategic planning work does have regular scheduled check-ins with the core planning team, with the measurement team, sometimes on a year to every 18-month basis, to make sure that we're consistent and we're following through with the plan. But this is an exciting opportunity, and the 40 or so staff really come from across the whole organization. And it's been interesting to watch how, what we maybe thought was going to be the thing, when you talk to the expert who delivers it, you realize that you maybe have to tweak it a little bit. So I really, it's been a great opportunity for staff to really contribute and take ownership of the plan. So with that, Mayor and council, all stand for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sable. And thank you for that update. It's nice to know, to see and to hear of how it's chugging along in the background, basically, as it just kind of moves along and kind of chugs along. But then to see actual tangible things, like the Small Business Development Center, coming out of the work that was done in the planning process, the core planning team, the conversations with the rest of the city and the residents, to see it all kind of coming together, it's no longer just kind of this thing in the sky, this idea thing on paper, but it's actually things that we can see, some actual movement on different goals that we do have in the community. So, thank you for that. Council, specific questions on the update from Mr. Sable? Councilmember Mua.
Thank you. I just have a comment. I was part of the core planning, and we're very excited to see the work coming to life. The one thing I just want to make sure that city staff continues to keep in mind, especially when it comes to the equitable part, because this was a big conversation that we had during the process, is make sure that we understand that equitable and equality are two different words and have two different meanings. So just making sure that as we're moving through that process, we're not getting those two words confused with each other, and we focus on the equitability piece, not equality.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Carter.
Thank you, Mayor. So very, very exciting. Did you say the dashboard is live, or when would it be live?
Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Carter, we are, it is not live, it is in draft form, being edited. We are sort of, we were tentatively shooting for a March 31 launch.
Okay. And then are you going to share these slides with us?
Yes, they will be uploaded into the packet and then distributed.
Great. Because I feel like I was, like, thinking about so many things when you were going through them, or I had, like, yeah. And then how often will we get an update as a council on how we're making progress?
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Carter, we are currently thinking of quarterly reports, sort of summaries, but the city council has an agenda item every quarter.
Okay, thank you.
Council, anything additional? Councilmember Lohman?
I don't need to say how much, you know, work that staff has done. It's an incredible amount of work to get to where we're at, and we had another plan before that, and now we're on to our new one here. One just side question, I'm not looking for an answer today. I saw as one of the targets, or I don't know which layer of organization it is, but residential waste, you know, we try to do a reduction with that, and I was curious about why we didn't pick commercial, and I'm assuming that's because of the complexity of trying to do that, but I'm not looking for an answer for that today, just one of those curiosity things. As we look to move forward with this new, new strategic plan, and I know one of the fears that I have is we've got a number of programs and things that we've done in the past that are out there. Has staff looked at how we may either repurpose the staff that we already have, and kind of sunset some of those older programs that we have? How are we going to handle that kind of moving forward? Because obviously, there's a great deal of resources that we're moving towards, but there are things that we've done in the past that maybe aren't going to be a priority anymore.
Mr. Sable?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Councilmember Lohman, I think the question is a good one, and it's really, as a staff, we've talked about, we've often developed really robust plans, and we've done lots of those kinds of work. And so one of the things that we're trying to think about when we try to reallocate or repurpose sort of resources is, is it a wholesale change, or is it, can we make some sort of minor tweaks to that? And I think the work that's happened and talking about, and I'll use the Natural Resources Project that was considered for the local option sales tax, that's actually one that was an idea that has grown in sort of interest, and the strategic plan has sort of brought that forward. And so as staff, we've sort of repurposed one of the park staff members to be more project-focused rather than sort of program-focused. And so that, those changes are subtle internally, but really driven towards making sure this is a reality. And so we see smaller examples of tweaks, and I think, you know, one of the things that we often will talk about with Diane Kirby and her team is, you know, if we talk about building connections to neighborhoods, do we actually start to engage around neighborhood formation? And is that a conversation through coed or through community development? And so, we don't have that answer, but it's something that we think about regularly, and I would say probably on a daily basis.
Thinking, if I could just say, I think it's going to be important, you know, as we move forward, Mayor, you know, with these larger levies, if we continue to do that, to really inform not only this council, but the general public in terms of what we're doing to be, you know, good stewards of taxpayers' resources. I mean, I think we do a good job, but I think we really have to be, I know Councilmember Martin has really talked about, we got to get out there and tell people what we're doing. And so, you know, and I'm reminded of that, I just want to encourage us to share those stories that we have there as we move forward this year and into the future, that we are deliberate, and we tell people what we're doing with those resources.
Agreed, councilmember. Thank you. Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess more of a question than anything, I wonder if, so I'm very excited, you know me, dashboard's my favorite thing that's ever going to happen, so I'm super excited about that. And I appreciate that, you know, a lot of the stuff that, there's a lot of guidance as it comes to metrics and things like that in the natural resources space that make it somewhat easy to put that together. Some of the other stuff will be a little bit more qualitative, a little bit more difficult for that, so understand the challenge there. What I want to be sure we are doing as we move through this strategic plan, if you think about the timeline for the strategic plan, this lines up incredibly, remarkably, exactly with the expo. And we don't talk about the impact of the expo on our strategic priorities yet, and I think, because we haven't won it yet. But I think we should be prepared to have that conversation. And what does it mean to change, what will it do to change the entire staff's, you know, focus, if at all, right? Should it, right? Or should we continue to be driving the strategic plan and have that be something that is, I think it was described as a tactic to get economic development done, and therefore it should not impact this plan, right? We should, I just wonder if we should be open and honest and proactive about having that discussion, because I don't know that we'll have the time if we win. So I want to, you know, I don't know if that, we can table that and have more of that discussion at the, in the five slot, if we want to do that or whatever, but it's on my mind as a result of looking at the symmetry here.
Mr. Verugi?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I was, councilmembers, councilmember Delisandro, I was tracking up until you said the, we may not have time for the conversation, so I guess, help me a little bit more with the comment about...
I didn't mean the conversation so much, is, I think one of the things that you've said before, City Manager, about the expo is that the timeline for the expo, right, is pretty much a, like a sprint the whole, the whole way, right? Because of the need to be, you know, two years out already breaking ground in construction. So if you back that up, and you're talking about about 18 months of planning to make sure we all have our ducks in the row before we break ground and everything, that compressed 18 months feels very much in conflict with maybe some of the things that are coming to a head here when it comes to our strategic priorities. And that's what I mean by that, if that's helpful.
It is, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, councilmember Delisandro. I think the timeline, if indeed we end up being the host community for expo, the 18 month that you're talking about in the development planning is for the development project itself, right? And so certainly there are going to be issues related to our sustainability policies and issues related to our economic development objectives, especially in the area of making sure that we have promotion of opportunity for new business development by underrepresented communities. I think all of those are going to be important discussions about how we connect, but it doesn't necessarily fit within the timeframe, because the 18 months is just really, how do we put together a development project, which is what the expo is for us as the host community? It's a 52-acre large development project, right? And then the policies of what we're trying to accomplish in that development project is where we bring in, I think, the strategic objectives that we have talked about as it pertains to sustainability, as it pertains to economic development, as it pertains to making sure that there's economic, equitable economic development for individuals. How we work that into the development project is part of what will drive those conversations. That can be a policy discussion with the council, and it probably is an important one, so you can maybe plant a flag in the ground as we go into those about what's important for the council, but know that staff is already thinking about what those strategic priorities are when we're going into these development projects already.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, to build a little bit on Councilmember Delisandro's point, I think, as I'm sure everybody up here on this dais has heard, Councilmember Mua included, residents saying, it's fantastic to have something like the Mall of America in the community, but what does that do for the community as a whole? Help me draw that line between moving forward our broader strategic priorities. And I'm really thinking this World's Fair is just another example of that. How, as we're moving this forward, are we communicating how on the backend of this project, it's helping us resource those broader strategic initiatives? And just being intentional about that communication on the front end could help us answer a lot of questions we hear in a lot of areas.
Council, anything else? Very good. Mr. Sable?
Nothing further, thank you.
And so we'll hear it from you again. Is this the start of the quarterly update, or?
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Mr. Mayor, I was going to suggest that if indeed we stay on time here with our plan and can bring our dashboard live by the end of March or early April, I would like to bring it back and just do a more wholesome demonstration here at the council level, and let then be the start of the next quarterly reports.
I would like, that would be good. To kick the tires, I think would be a good way to learn our way through it and to take a look at what it's going to accomplish. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Sable. We'll move on to our consent business. Item three on our agenda. Councilmember Martin has our consent agenda this evening. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I've heard a couple of holds. I've got a hold on item 3.6 from Councilmember Delisandro, and a hold on 3.15, I believe the city manager and Councilmember Lohman both brought that up. Was there any other holds? Oh, and 3.1, I'll hold myself. Any others? 3.6, yep. Perfect. I guess, seeing no additional, I will move approval of 3.2 through 3.5, and 3.7 through 3.14.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember Delisandro, to accept tonight's consent agenda as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Let's hold off on item 3.1, let's move to item 3.6 if we could.
Thank you. You okay with that, Mr. Martin? Okay, great.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you. Yeah, so, as you guys always know, we talked about this Civic Plaza roof, I think when I first got here, it was one of my first favorite things that I talked about with the Public Works Department, and largely because I know that they were working on building it so that it could support solar panels. And I just was curious as to whether or not, since... And I just was curious as to whether or not, since enough time had passed, and the IRA has since been passed by the federal government, and there's more dollars specifically allocated towards sustainability initiatives, if we've got any update on whether or not we can get those solar panels put on that roof. I would love that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Councilmember De La Sando, we have Mr. Keel, I believe, is online, so I'm wondering, Mike, if you were able to bring Carl up. I don't know the specific answer about how much the ability to incorporate solar has been factored into this project for the benefit of folks who are watching at home. We identified the need to repair the Civic Plaza roof and, and replace it. It was in our 2022 CIP. We have recently bid the project, and it has come in about $400,000 or $500,000, a little less than what we had originally estimated. And the source of funds is the American Rescue Plan dollars that we had allocated last year from a tranche of 11.4 million total dollars that came to the city. And I see Mr. Keel is ready to go. Carl, can you answer the question about the incorporation of solar panels into roof design?
Yes, Council and Mayor and Council, good to be with you this evening. As Councilmember De La Sando noted, the project is solar-ready, that is, that the structure and the roof structure that's being built will accommodate solar. And the project as currently stands does not include the installation of solar. That said, as, as was noted, there's a lot of federal dollars starting to take shape, that we're pretty confident we're going to have opportunities to try to chase a pretty major solar project, both on Civic Plaza and on the Public Works roof. Unfortunately, right now, those programs from the II, the Infrastructure Act, the Federal Infrastructure Act, are not, those dollars have not yet made their way to the state where they've been distributed to us, so, but we are watching that very closely. So, I think kind of in that area, we have a number of facilities, we're looking at solar, we're also looking at a number of EV charging type of projects that, that would avail themselves of the same funds.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So, Mr. Keel, so the, the roof is solar-ready, we just don't have the funding lined up yet, but we'll be working toward the funding for solar if and when it becomes available at the state level.
That is correct, Mayor.
Very good. Council, additional questions of Mr. Keel? Carl, I hope you're doing well, how are you?
Doing much better, thank you, Mayor.
Good, I'm glad to hear it. Glad to hear it. Looking forward to seeing you again soon. Council, if there are no further questions on item 3.6, I would look for a motion on 3.6. So, who?
Do I need to read it out? Or is that that good enough?
That motion is fine.
Okay, second.
We've got a motion and a second to move forward with item 3.6 on our consent business as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Item 3.15, our 2023 legislative policies discussion. Councilmember Lohman, who is holding that one? Mr. Verbrugge?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I asked Councilmember Martin to hold this item for me. For the benefit of those watching at home, we brought the legislative platform back to the council here, because we had three items that we wanted to add, and then, since we put the packet together, we had one more that emerged, so that's why I've asked to pull it, is to add that additional one. Referenced it in some information I sent to the council earlier. The City of Bloomington, along with the Cities of Edina, Eden Prairie, and the Metropolitan Airports Commission have a joint powers organization that we own and operate, the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility, that's located in the City of Edina. And that facility is in need of some capital improvements. We went to the legislature a couple of years ago, received $1 million of capital bonding to support that project, and the bidding for the project came back well in excess of that number. And so, the board chose to reject all bids and to return to the legislature and ask for an additional $1 million of bonding, and that request is moving this year. So, the, the simple request is to also add to our legislative policies, support for the South Metro Public Safety Training Facility, additional bonding request of $1 million. And hopefully, that's okay with council, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Council, any questions of Mr. Verbrugge on this? Mr. Councilmember Lohman?
Can the roof of that building support a solar panel?
Mr. Mayor and Councilmember, Councilmember Lohman, I am unaware of the, of the weight sustaining capacity for the facility over there.
I just had one comment that I wanted to make. I just wanted to thank staff for adding back in that Certified Salt Applicators Program, establishing the limited liability and the report requirement support for that. As I was sliding into the building today, it reminded me to, to, to mention that, how important that, that work is. And then, the other pieces that we have here that we're adding to that as well, I think those are great things. Thanks.
I apologize, Mr. Mayor. Can I get a little clarification on what exactly that one is? Would somebody be able to describe it for me? The salt limited liability thing?
Councilmember Lohman takes shot.
I'd be happy to talk about that. This is probably an opportunity for me to say that I am a, a member of the, of Clean Water Action, I'm a board member there, and this is something we also care about as, as that as well. And one of, what this does is this tries to encourage commercial users or institutional users to, to try to put the right amount or reduce the amount of salt that they place on their parking lots. As we know, salt is, you know, a leading contaminant in ways in which that we impair our waterways. And so, this would help, one, to kind of train those folks who apply salt to those lots, to try to get them to reduce it and use it in a very effective way to help sustain our environment. So, that's why I'm a strong supporter of us trying to move this forward.
If I may just ask a follow-up?
Please.
Just curious, what, what does the limited liability provide them, should they be certified?
Well, I'm not going to pretend to be a lawyer, but in my un- attorney background, one of the, the reasons why applicators put so much salt on there is because there is that liability risk. And so, what this helps to do is if you're following this program, this, you know, this also with the, with the, and again, this bill can change, so I'm very, I want to be careful about how I characterize this. But, but what this is able to do is it's, it's to help limit that liability of those folks who are trying to apply that.
I appreciate the, the explanation, Councilmember Lohman. Basically, they're saying, hey, if you're a member of this certified community, we've told you to do it this way, if there is an issue, we'll hold you somewhat harmless or whatever.
If that's how the bill ends.
Understood, understood. Yep, thank you. Thanks for the clarification, I appreciate it. Thank you.
So, all questions answered on item 3.15? So, with that, I'd look for a motion, if I could.
I'd be happy to...
Councilmember Lohman?
Move it as it is written in the packet.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Martin, to approve item 3.15 in our consent agenda this evening. No further council discussion on this, all those in...
Oh, Mayor, probably shouldn't have said it that way.
Yep, correct.
Can I restate?
If you're supportive, is adding in the support for the South Metro Training Facility.
Yeah. Mayor, can we, let me restate that, that motion, as saying that we move to adopt revised 2023 legislative policies, including all of the statements that the manager made today and the ones that are listed here in the pack? Will that work for you guys?
The first motion worked for me, so I'm good.
Well, it didn't include, but the way I said it would have locked his stuff out, and I didn't want to do that, so.
Understood, all right.
That's acceptable to me.
We're clear on that, okay. Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Martin, to accept item 3.15 as stated by Councilmember Lohman. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Now, let's double back to item 3.1. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Always love it when my consent agenda meeting happens to line up with donations, because again, it's awesome to see so many community members stepping up to support the work of the city. All kinds of individual contributions, contributions for small equipment for our departments, and a variety of contributions to the Bloomington Police Department, some of them from our business partners in the community, Radisson Blue, Attorney Groups, Minnesota Air. And also, a special thank you to Rosemary Townsend, who made a very, very generous contribution to our Officer Wellness Program. Always amazing to see folks in the community stepping up to take care of people that are taking care of them every day. And if there is no comments or questions, I'm happy to make the motion.
Councilmember Martin?
All right. Mayor, I will move that we adopt a resolution, a resolution to accept the donations that's listed.
Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember De La Sando, to approve item 3.1, the resolution to accept donations on our consent business this evening. No further council discussion on this, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Councilmember Martin. We will move on to item four on our agenda. This is our hearings, resolutions, and ordinances. As I stated when we talked about the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, we have two public hearings this evening. The first one is item 4.1. This is a public hearing. It's a privately initiated city code amendment regarding college/university retail and medical office. Ms. O'Day from our planning staff is here. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Mr. Brillhart, is there something that, there we go? All right. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Item 4.1 on your agenda this evening is for a privately initiated city code amendment to create two new use definitions and allow them as permitted uses in the R1 zoning district. A little bit about the applicant, this is Northwest Health Sciences University, and they're located at 2501 West 84th Street. They are a private university focusing on alternative healthcare education and offers programs such as chiropractic, massage, Chinese medicine, et cetera. Their total campus size is 264,739 square feet. And as a note, that these medical office and retail uses already exist, and they're not proposing any physical changes. I just wanted to touch on the definition of accessory use. I highlighted a couple of components that are important for this application. The first is that the accessory use cannot exceed 10% of the principal use floor area, and the second is that the accessory use cannot attract customers independently of the principal use. So, this definition of accessory use would limit the medical office and the retail sales. Therefore, the applicant is proposing to create a new definition for a retail complementary to a college/university, and I'll read the definition out loud here. It says, complementary retail sales uses affiliated with a college/university that do not exceed 5% of the total floor area of the building in which they are located, or 5,000 square feet in floor area, whichever is less. The retail store already exists, as I mentioned earlier, and they're not proposing any physical expansion. The store size is 4,300 square feet, which is approximately 1.6% of the total campus area. The size complies with their proposed definition. And just a note, that they sell primarily items that you would find in a bookstore, like books and apparel, but then they would also sell vitamins, supplements, wellness gifts, massage equipment, et cetera. And under the proposed definition, the store would be open to the public. And just a note for the public, that this would not be allowed as a standalone, the retail use would not be allowed as a standalone use in the R1 zoning district. The retail must be affiliated with a college/university on site. And then, they would likely have an exterior permanent sign. Just a note, that a sign permit is required for that. And the second definition relates to medical office. I'll read this definition again. Complementary medical office uses affiliated with a college or university and its teaching mission that does not exceed 20% of the floor area of the building in which they are located. Upon review of their floor plans, the medical office, or the public clinics in this case, exceed 10% of the floor area, and they currently have three separate clinics totaling a combined area of 29,577 square feet, which comes to 11% of the total campus area. Again, similar to the other definition, the medical office must be associated with a college or, college or university. And then, the two new definitions would be added as a permitted use in the R1 zoning district in the city code use table. And then, lastly, the staff has received multiple emails of concern from one correspondent, and they provided, they have been provided to you in the packet. And the planning commission and staff are recommending approval of the privately initiated code amendment, and the applicants from Northwestern Health Sciences University are in attendance tonight.
Thank you, Ms. O'Day. Council, any questions of Ms. O'Day on this presentation? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. You indicated that these uses already exist, so how did this come up and come before planning and us?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Nelson. This actually came through, through a sign permit inquiry. The, the representative from Northwestern Health Sciences approached me about putting up a sign, and I kind of looked into it a little bit further and found out that they were not allowed a, a sign on the exterior of the building, because their use wouldn't, wouldn't be, wouldn't be allowed under the definition of accessory use.
Second question, were any other options other than changing this zoning language investigated, or are they possible to do a variance, to look at deviations to their plan or anything? I know we do that for other areas like parking and things like that, so we could make this very site-specific to them?
Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I don't think a variance, I know that use variances aren't allowed, so I don't think that would be an appropriate avenue, and other alternatives weren't provided.
Okay. Last question, you indicated that this would be a permitted use. Can you just give me the thought process behind permitted versus conditional versus whatever else there is?
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Nelson, I think the reasoning is that, under this definition, it's a pretty reasonable size, and when we reviewed conditional use permits, we look at factors that might impact the neighborhood, like parking, et cetera. And I think, under this definition, it would, it makes sense that it's a permitted use and not a conditional use permit.
Councilmember De La Sando?
Hi there, how are you?
Hello.
Thanks for being with us. So, I know, I know that the language is explicit at the moment to create what we call a college/university complementary research, retail use, medical use area. Is, is that, is that def, is that defined in such a way that, for example, if, if, I'm making this up, right, for subjective reasoning, if the folks at one of our early childhood development centers wanted to put on a pediatric office next to it, or, you know, wanted to create a use for it, would that be prohibited by definition here, because college/university complementary is very, very specific?
Mayor, Councilmember De La Sando, that's correct. It is, college/university is separately defined, so it is a different, different definition as to say, like a K-12 school, or an instructional center, or other types of learning facilities. So, this is a very specific type of definition.
Okay, thank you. Do you, do you anticipate, do you anticipate pushback at some point, or can you anticipate pushback at some point on, on that being too specific of a definition? Like, was there, was there any consideration to the idea that, that, you know, for example, the reason that Northwest Science is there is because that used to be Lincoln High School, right? I think? Do I have that right? Penn High School, some high school? An elementary school? It was even an elementary school, even more to my point. Yeah, an elementary school, that's right. So, so what happens if, if that, if that goes in reverse, right? Or if we find that one of our charter schools wants to do something, and they're, you know, like, how do we prevent ourselves from getting into a situation not that different than maybe where we were before, where we could, we say, like, hey, there's no problem to update the zone, because then we can handle each of the cases on a case-by-case basis, and then, somebody works really hard to find, like, the letter of the law definition, but it doesn't necessarily appeal to the people around them, and we're stuck, you know... them, and we're stuck, you know, not being able to do anything about it. I want to be sure that we feel confident that this is... And by the way, nothing against Northwest Sciences, because I have used their services, and I have bought medication at their place. So I totally know the area to which you're referring. I want to be sure that we're really explicit about the... I'm not being very articulate. Mr. Mayor, maybe you can help me here. R1 is such a large zone in our community, and when we do something, then we paper across that entire zone. We potentially put ourselves in a position to find ourselves in consequences we didn't anticipate. So I guess the question I would ask is, you know, have we gamified that, if you will? We've played some game theory with the potential, you know, potential pitfalls and the lessons learned from past situations like this.
And have we intended the unintended consequences, or anticipated the unintended consequences?
Yeah, or at least thought about them, you know, to the extent that we could, right? Because nobody can predict the future. But I just wonder if it's such a... It's the biggest, you know, zoning area we have, and it's such a big thing to change.
It is indeed, and I guess I would defer to staff in terms of their work that has been done and the thought that they bring to this to, you know, avoid the unintended consequences, to anticipate as much as possible, and to put it together in such a way that we don't end up stepping in something as we move forward, based on past experience, based on lessons learned, based on what we've heard from other cities in similar situations. So, Mr. Mark again.
Sure. Mayor Bussey, Councilmember DeLaSandro, we have done a lot of review on this proposal and thought a lot about potential consequences, potential other uses. We've talked a lot with the legal staff on, you know, questions that we've received from the public. And we do feel that the use is highly limited. To have this use, it would first have to be a college or a university, which is a conditional use in the R1 zoning district. So that would need to be reviewed first. And then, secondly, there would be another application for this use within the college or university. We are able to differentiate between uses and have different standards for different uses, so we feel comfortable in that regard.
Councilmember Lohman.
Well, and that's basically the point by which I put forward, you know, in terms of that whole question, you know, that we put forward, the question about, you know, other cities, you know, use, have a different history of having institutional uses, you know, in a zoning code separate from the residential. And I think you outlined that, you know, the ramifications of that and what that means if we were to make a shift. And I know, and I, Mayor, I'm looking at this right here, and I understand what we have here is a proposed piece here for R1 zoning district change. So I want to make sure that we all... But I want to ask the question. You know, can't colleges/universities be in commercial zones? And when you looked at that, you know, why wasn't the suggestion... And I think I already know the answer to this, but I want to ask the question anyways, just so I understand why the recommendation wasn't. Couldn't we just, you know, put a, you know, rezone that as commercial, you know, pick the appropriate one, and then say, hey, this is what this is now, kind of moving forward. Now it's commercial. You should be able to do, you know, the signage and that kind of piece. Why didn't staff go down that route in terms of suggesting that?
Sure. Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman, you're correct that medical office and retail are allowed in various commercial districts. We did explore that idea with the applicants, and staff does have concerns about rezoning the site or other colleges and universities to a commercial zoning district, given the location.
Sorry. I'll collapse.
Given the location surrounded by residential uses in this case, under state law, spot zoning is prohibited, and one could argue that if you rezone just this one site to commercial, that that could be a spot zoning, so that was a consideration. Yeah, we felt that this solution better addressed the issue at hand.
So let's say that there wasn't the spot zoning piece, and we did a bigger chunk to get it to work that way. Are there other long-term factors with changing it from a residential one? Because I guess I want to just kind of bring forward is I understand there were some concerns there, but when you start going... I don't want to go through all the alternatives, because I don't think that's what we want to do. But I do think it's reasonable to think, hey, why not just make it, you know, commercial? And, you know, what does that look like long-term? Let's say Northwestern isn't there, and now it's commercially... It's zoned commercially. What happens then at that point?
Yes. Mayor Bussey, Councilmember Lohman, that's a good point. Rezoning would open the site up to a variety of other uses that are not allowed today. You could imagine a freestanding restaurant, or, you know, various other uses added to the site over time, which from our perspective would not be compatible at that location. However, this limited complementary use within the facility that probably draws relatively few people that wouldn't be there anyway. We feel the impacts of that are very manageable in the neighborhood, whereas, let's say, adding other commercial uses and freestanding buildings would not be compatible.
Councilmember DeLaSandro.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, what I heard in the follow-up conversation there was really interesting to me. So the R... Within R1, college/university is a conditional use to begin with. This would be a permitted use under that conditional use. So you'd have to get through the conditional use permit first to have a university or college to begin within R1, and then this would be a permitted use on top of that, or in addition to that.
Yes. Mayor Bussey, Councilmember DeLaSandro, that's correct.
Okay, great. Last question then. Are there any... Is there any colleges or universities, or even schools of any kind, in a district that's not R1, like anywhere in the city? Or do they all generally... Or all of Bloomington Public Schools are R1, I assume?
Yes. So, Mayor Bussey, Councilmember DeLaSandro, so the three primary colleges/universities are all zoned R1. So Normandale College, Northwestern Health Sciences University, and Bethany College of Missions are zoned R1. We do have other satellite offices, for example, Rasmussen, that are in commercial districts. A lot of those districts already allow medical office and accessory retail. So the use change isn't needed in that district should they want to have similar uses, but it's not currently allowed in R1.
And just to clarify, to that point, there are specific requirements and specifications that make something a college or a university. It's not simply putting up a flyer or sending on an email saying we have a college or a university. That's not a college or a university. You need to have specific requirements met before you are officially a college or university in the city of Bloomington. Is that correct?
Mayor Bussey, that's correct. We have a very specific definition in the zoning code, and if you don't meet that definition, if you don't have the conditional use permit, if you're in the R1 district, you would not be a college or a university.
Good. Thank you. Anything else, Counsel? I see President Dr. Deb Bushway in the audience. Is there anything Northwestern Health Sciences would like to add? Would you like to say anything?
[inaudible] to Mike Tennyson, our Vice President for Clinics.
Very good. Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you for having us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the Council, and thank you for your business. Yeah, I just want to say...
If you could identify yourself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael Tennyson, I am the Vice President for our clinics and retail at Northwestern, and just want to say, you know, we've been serving the Bloomington community since 1983 and been in Minnesota since 1941, and we really appreciate you concerning our proposal. And certainly, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those now.
Counsel, any questions for Vice President Tennyson? Councilmember Nelson and Councilmember Lohman. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. There was one item that I just want a little bit of clarification on in terms of the retail part of it. Are you looking to... I wouldn't say expand, because it doesn't sound like you're looking to expand the square feet of retail, but are you looking to, instead of selling stuff to people that are already there, the students, the, you know, the people that... Patrons there, you know? Are you looking to market the retail part to the larger community to come in there?
Yes, that is correct. I mean, that is the intent of what we are trying to do. And I mean, the reality is, as you've heard, it's already happening, is people do come in. They've been coming in from the community, but we became aware of the situation when we were looking to put up a sign, and we said, well, obviously, we would like to try to address this in some way, shape, or form. So we have actually four clinics. It says three, but one... There's a clinic kind of within a clinic. And a majority of those clinics actually serve the public at large. And then one of the clinics is... The vast majority of services are actually for internal audience. But the store itself is really a combination of books and supplies for students, but there is a lot of things that the general public could buy, and then we also have a lot of our alumni that are referring back to us. So if you think of... If you go to a chiropractor and they have supplements, they may have a small kind of subset of products, but we have a lot, right? And so they'll send their patients to us to basically get that product, so they don't have to house all that product in their clinic. And so certainly, we are looking to expand and kind of diversify our product offerings to continue to diversify our business, but, you know, I think at this point, it's really kind of a mixture of audiences.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one quick follow-up. So, but all of the products, as well as the services in the medical clinic, are related to what the university, what the college is teaching, and its mission there? These are not unrelated products just for the sake of revenue or anything like that? It's related to your core educational mission? Is that accurate?
Yeah, we call them adjacent, I guess, is kind of the term we use. So, for example, we don't intend to open a dental office or something, right? We don't, you know, practice teaching dentists, and so we certainly are kind of focused on the programs that we provide. And then certainly, you know, from the retail side, there's a lot of things that are adjacent, but, you know, we certainly kind of stay within our lanes, I guess, if you will.
Thank you. Councilmember Lohman.
Thank you, Mayor. And also thank the college there for the service that's done over the years in the community. It's been a great asset to Bloomington residents and many things that it does do with us. One question that I just had from looking through the staff report and some of the requests there is, you know, I think the way that it was put, there's a changing in the paradigm of, you know, colleges and university, especially in the segment by which that you find yourselves in, you know, kind of a smaller private piece. And I'm just curious, you know, as we... Part of this is the evolving... The request to do this is the evolving nature of the business. And I'm just curious, from a policymaker perspective, are there other things that we should be, you know, kind of be looking out, you know, in the future to be proactive, that our staff should be looking for, you know, as we, you know, look at this zone? And, you know, maybe you've got nothing, but I've just... That kind of scared me a little bit when I read that, that you guys were facing that. I'm just curious if there's anything you wanted to, you know, blend this policy body that we should know about.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, and you might have more to say than I do on this, Deb, but I would just say, yeah, and just to give a little more clarity, you know, stepping back, the university has put in place a strategic plan to continue to diversify and grow our services and revenues because of the decline that's happening locally and nationally in higher education enrollment. And so what we've done is diversified our educational offerings into different disciplines. So when Argosy closed a couple of years ago, we actually picked up the Rad Tech program, the Rad Therapy program, the Medical Assisting program, their lab programs, and again, the retail, and then the clinics, and then also our continuing education. We're trying to kind of grow those businesses to try to help offset some of that loss in the enrollment area. And so certainly, I guess I would just say at a high level, anything that you can do to make it easier for us and other institutions to try to kind of diversify their services while obviously kind of remaining to their core, you know, I think it would be really beneficial.
Yeah, I think Mike really expressed that well. We, you know, we're a hired institution committed to the health sciences. That's not going to change. Our mission is to educate the next generation of healthcare providers, but within that, we want to take a wide scope of it. That just allows us to offer an affordable education to the students. If we pass on all our inflationary costs to the students, tuition and student debt load becomes once more even more untenable than it already is for these professions. So we're very interested in making sure that we support a high-quality education at the same time maintaining affordability. So we've got to be thinking about those strategies. I don't have any specific ask for you now, but definitely appreciate your asking us for it.
Well, thank you for coming. We know where to find you in case you...
You do.
Thanks for coming tonight. Any additional questions, Counsel? Very good. Thank you. Counsel, this is a public hearing, and I'm going to open the public hearing right now. This is item 4.1, a public hearing regarding the city code amendment for college/university retail and medical office. Is there anyone in the council chambers who wishes to speak to item 4.1 this evening? Anyone? Mr. Sable, do we have anyone online who wishes to speak to item 4.1?
Mr. Mayor, no one on the line.
Last call for the council chambers. Counsel, no one coming forward, no one on the line. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.1. Motion by Councilmember Martin, second by Councilmember DeLaSandro to close the public hearing on item 4.1. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Counsel, any additional discussion on this one? Councilmember Lohman.
Well, Mayor, you know, what I would say is, you know, certainly I think there are some valid concerns when we make changes to any of our districts, but I think there's also some advantages, and there's some things that, by making this change, that it kind of makes it so that we don't make other changes. So, for example, if we were to, you know, put the commercial zone there, that creates other conflicts and that type of thing. So I think this is a good... This is a really good solution, both supported by staff and really reasoned and thought-through by staff and put forward. And I think this is something I could support, because I just think this is just something that helps in that process as we're seeing, you know, the market shifting and changes. Certainly, they're dealing with inflation. This is one way to deal with it, and I think we're going to see more of these things. And I hope that we can kind of get ahead of these things and start proposing our own changes to zones to help these businesses to be able to compete and to help our tax base. So I will be supporting this.
Councilmember Nelson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I think this makes sense for Northwestern. You know, I lived near that college for a number of years. It's a great community asset, and it makes sense what they're doing there and why they want to continue doing that. My questions or concerns relate to where that might go, so I got a couple, maybe more questions for staff. Normandale College, I assume, has a bookstore, and you can probably buy a sweatshirt and whatever else there. It's a, if I understand correctly, maybe by the number of students there, the largest in the Minskew system, or one of the largest in the Minskew system. Will they be able to meet the 5,000-square-foot requirement that's in here for retail space?
Mayor, Councilmember, yes, they do meet their... The size of the bookstore does meet their proposed definition.
Okay. And then that would not include any other types of things like cafeterias or things? Those would be under other separate things, so if they had a place to grab a sandwich and a soda and stuff?
Yeah, correct.
Great. Just want to make sure we didn't accidentally handicap Normandale. Otherwise, I'm sure they'd be before us. So we can generate more revenue with some privately initiated changes here. The other way that I was looking at it is, let's say somebody wanted to set up a technical college and teach people a trade, and would they then be able to set up a hardware store within there that people could go in and shop at? Under this definition, I would think that they could, but I can't imagine a 5,000-square-foot hardware store being a very viable business. And so that, you know, I guess I'd just ask for some staff input on that, but would they be able to do that if there was a technical college? Because there's a lot of demand for the technical field. Because there's a lot of demand for the technical field, the trades right now. But, um, you know, I mean, I think, you know, Ace Hardware, you know, it's got to be at least 10,000 square feet. And I, I don't know that that would be viable. So I just want to make sure there isn't a concern in that direction that somebody could set up a store like that.
Yeah. Uh, Mayor Boosie, Councilmember Nelson. In theory, that would be possible. I'm thinking more likely than not, a college of that nature might prefer an industrial location, um, than a residential location. But in theory, they could apply for a conditional use permit. And if it's compatible, it could be approved. And then under this ordinance, uh, there could be a retail, uh, component, you know, limited that could sell complimentary, uh, products. You know, whether that gets into hardware would depend on the, you know, the nature of the school, but I guess in theory that would be possible.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions? Councilmember De La Sando?
I, apologies, Mr. Mayor. I thought that, I thought that the definition of college or university was really specific and it didn't include technical or institutional. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, Mayor Boosie, Councilmember, uh, De La Sando. Um, you could imagine two varieties of that. One that's more a, a typical college that offers, uh, you know, a associate or bachelor's degree. Uh, you could also imagine a variety of that, that we would consider an instructional center, um, uh, which is not allowed in the R1 district today. It would be allowed in industrial zones. So, uh, a use like that could go in either direction. It would be more likely to be an instructional center and therefore not allowed in, in the R1 district.
Right. So for example, Mr. Mayor, if I, if, if, if the, the good folks at, um, Hennepin County Technical said, I don't want to be in Eden Prairie anymore. I want to come to Bloomington, would they be considered a college, university or an instructional school?
Yeah, Mayor Boosie, Councilmember De La Sando, I'm not super familiar with, with Hennepin Tech, but, uh, if they are offering, uh, degrees, um, and function, you know, under our definition, they potentially could be a college or university.
And the conditional use permit that they would have to receive would have to give them the ability to teach, I'm making something up, large machinery movement studies or something to that effect, like, you know, uh, in an R1 zone, I would think that it would not necessarily pass muster on a conditional use permit if they were teaching people to drive semis, for example, in their parking lot next to houses.
Yeah. Uh, Mayor Boosie, Councilmember De La Sando, it's certainly possible there would be incompatibility issues with such a use, uh, which typically they would look in, in, in industrial area. But in theory, you could imagine Normandale adding a program along, you know, a certain line, for example.
And this like other discussions, council, let's, let's make sure we don't head down to, head down hypotheticals and, and worst case scenarios that, uh, we, we challenge staff to try and come up with details that they might not have. Let's, uh, stick to, to what we're kind of considering here tonight. So. So council, any additional questions? Councilmember Lohman?
Oh, I don't have any questions. Ready to move this?
Ready to move this?
Yep.
Councilmember Lohman?
All right. Uh, Mayor, uh, I'd like to go ahead and move to adopt an ordinance to create a college, university complimentary retail use and college, university complimentary medical office use in the zoning definition to add the uses as permitted uses in the R1 zoning district, thereby amending chapters 19 and 21 of the city code.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Martin to adopt the ordinance to create a college, university complimentary retail use and college, university complimentary medical office use in the zone definitions as stated. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0 with Councilmember Carter having stepped away. Councilmember Lohman, summary publication?
Move to approve a resolution, authorize a summary publication of an ordinance to create a college, university complimentary retail use and college, university complimentary medical office use in the zoning definition and to add the uses as permitted uses in the R1 zoning district, thereby amending chapters 19 and 21 of the city code.
Second? Motion by Councilmember Lohman, second by Councilmember Martin for summary publication on this, on this issue. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Ms. O'Dea.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you to Dr. Bushway and Vice President. Uh, thanks for being here this evening, answering our questions. I look forward to seeing you again soon. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We will move to item 4.2 on our agenda, our second public hearing of the evening. This is a city code amendment creating a TI zoning district, rezoning parcels from I3 to TI and a related comprehensive plan text amendment. We have with us Thomas Ramler Olson to lead us through this. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the city council. Let me pull up my presentation. Sorry about that. Okay. Uh, yes. Um, anyway, uh, Mayor, members of the city council, thank you very much. The proposal before you is the establishment of, I mean, there's several parts actually. So I'll just skip to the next slide, which summarizes what's the proposal before you tonight. It's to amend chapters 19 and 21 of the city code to establish this new district that's the transitional industrial district or TI. Um, we're also proposing to, uh, re, uh, we're recommending to rezone, uh, 28 lots along Lindale Avenue South between 86 and 92nd Streets, uh, from general industry, uh, that's the I3 district to, uh, the TI district transitional industrial. And the third part is a comp plan text amendment for, um, uh, modifying the description of industrial land use category to include uses that we're proposing as part of this, uh, TI district. The timeline actually goes pretty further back. I covered this during our study session back in November, but it began with the, um, conclusion of the, uh, planning effort, the Lindale Avenue Suburban retrofit plan back in April of 2021. But the project kicked off last year in mid-September and, uh, we began to, uh, develop our approach, uh, adopt our engagement strategy and level of engagement. And, uh, as you can see here, we've been carrying it through, uh, up till today. Uh, on the 12th, we had a public hearing with, uh, Planning Commission. And, um, uh, we'll get to the summary of how that meeting went in just a little bit. But, uh, yeah, getting back to the suburban retrofit plan, um, uh, a part of that plan was, uh, looking at specific nodes. The two nodes that were under, that were under review were at 98th and Lindale, then the second was at 86th and Lindale. And the area we're proposing to rezone, uh, is between 86 and 92nd. So it would be part of that node to rezone. And one of the, um, one of the recommendations that came out of the plan was to reconsider the zoning of those I3 parcels along Lindale Avenue to, uh, a zoning district or an overlay, something that was more compatible with the vision that was established in the retrofit plan. And that's what this, uh, proposal is, uh, uh, trying to do. Uh, the study area is pictured to the right, uh, on this slide. Uh, again, 82nd to nine, uh, or sorry, 86th to 92nd. And, um, you can see that it primarily focuses on those lots that are lining Lindale Avenue, although some go a little bit further deep, a little bit further to the east. Uh, some, uh, touch upon Harriet Avenue South, uh, along the north end of the project area. And so, um, any, tho- those that are, uh, considered within, uh, the, the boundaries of the stud- study area are those that we, we think would be impacted by this rezoning and therefore they're, uh, they're a, a good contender for being rezoned. Uh, engagement for this project, uh, kicked off in early October. We had a couple of, uh, or we had a few events. We had door knocking that took place right at the beginning of, um, October. Did I say November? I meant October. Um, and, uh, we had a couple of in, open house events. We had multiple mailers sent out to, not only to the property owners within the area that's being considered to be rezoned, but those, uh, just outside. And not only that, but we've had the public hearing. So everyone is aware that this is a proposal, um, being taken up by the city. So, um, there's been multiple opportunities to engage folks and, um, we've, we have received some public correspondence. Um, it was one, uh, it was one email in support of our effort. Granted, that was on the day of the Planning Commission meeting and there's been very minor tweaks to it, but nonetheless, I just thought I'd bring up that there has been one, uh, email in support of the, uh, this, uh, this proposal. Something that came up, uh, or that's been a, you know, a, a frequent point of, uh, concern is the, um, the uses that we're introducing with this new district. So for instance, we're expanding it to include, uh, retail, uh, non, uh, non-related retail. So that's just standalone retail. And, um, we'll have indoor recreation, we'll have, uh, some cultural facilities that'll be allowed within the area. But, uh, probably significantly is the inclusion of residential that we're proposing to be a conditional use within the area proposed to be rezoned. And what this map on the right of the slide is trying to demonstrate is that residential isn't an unfamiliar presence, uh, within the area. It's, it's right across the street on Lindale. It's, you know, it's a little bit south, it's a little bit north, it goes all the way to the Applewood Point and, uh, south to the, the cooperative housing development. So it's not unfamiliar. It's granted, it's not directly within the area that's proposed to be rezoned, but nonetheless it, there is pressure that's being put on this area to consider residential. So we just want to be ahead of that curve and put in the proper standards so that when residential does come in, it's compatible and it works within the area. And, uh, as I mentioned on, uh, uh, before, there's, there's numerous amendments that have to be made to the city code, uh, in chapters 19 and 21. This is a summary of what's being proposed. Uh, you have a more, uh, detailed description, obviously, in the staff report. And then you have the ordinance of, before you of all the changes that we're proposing and, and additions. So, um, uh, so in chapter 19, that's just merely adding the district to be considered amongst the list of industrial districts. And then 21 gets into actually defining the district and looking at the standards, um, the, the, the physical standards, uh, both site and building. And then we have, uh, use, the, the use table, the amendments to the use table to add the TI district and the uses distinguishing it from the I3, which is the current use. And then we have other, uh, development standards, intensity, uh, floor area ratio, all of that's, um, summarized within the staff report and in the ordinance before you. And then, uh, the last part is the, um, actually amendment to the zoning map to change those districts or, I'm sorry, those lots from the I3 district to the TI. Getting a little bit more detail about the use tables, we are proposing, again, residential, retail, indoor, recreational, cultural, those uses that we feel like that will add to the activity of the corridor, which was an, uh, an expression of the Lindale Avenue Suburban retrofit plan was to make it more active, more pedestrian friendly, more accommodating to people that might actually live in the area or even very close by. And, uh, you know, something to note is that we're not proposing any use non-conformities. Everything that are mo-, uh, uh, the, um, uses that we see in the area, uh, barring a couple of uses that I can, I can, uh, talk about further, but most of the uses right now will be accommodated with this change. We're, uh, proposing just to establish, um, for some of those uses that we, we don't want to see, uh, spread or be, uh, uh, be on other lots, we are still allowing them to continue at, at a point after the date of adoption. So you'll see that within the use tables in the ordinance before you that we make that, um, that accommodation to, uh, a lot of the uses that are present within the area being proposed for, uh, rezoning. And, uh, something that, uh, to, to bring up about, uh, this particular district is it's, it's different, it's different from what's there right now. There's a lot more emphasis on site and building standards, something that's more, um, trying to, uh, pedestrian friendly, something that brings buildings closer to, uh, the pedestrian that's traveling along sidewalk. That'll, um, actually add to the comfort and safety of those using those facilities. And, um, so trying to, uh, bring some, uh, some attention to what they, uh, might prefer, uh, what pedestrians might prefer along the corridor and trying to control for the impacts of the heavy car traffic that you see now on Lindale Avenue. And this is just a summary of the rezoning proposal. You'll see the, um, uh, the before and after, the existing and the proposed rezoning on the right. And, uh, just a summary of the surrounding uses that, um, you know, that this new district will be, uh, abutting when, um, should it be approved. As part of this project, we did do a racial equity impact analysis. We, within that analysis, we, uh, discussed some of the benefits and adverse impacts of the TI district and its application along Lindale Avenue. Uh, some of the benefits we noted within the, um, REIA or the impact analysis is that new housing and retail opportunities on a significant corridor, um, that's a, that's a benefit to the community. It'll bring housing directly to a corridor that already has amenities that people, uh, need, um, and, uh, that includes transit access as well. So we feel like that's, we feel that that's very important. That's, that also brings, uh, attention to, uh, to correcting some of the racial impacts of, uh, of development within the area. Some of the adverse impacts, um, are, uh, you know, it was, as mentioned before, there's, there's potential of conflicts between residential and the non-residential uses within the area. We, you know, staff, we, we were very conscious of that and we endeavored to address, uh, what those potential conflicts might be by making residential a conditional use. So whatever condition is reasonable in order to mitigate any, uh, conflicts between, uh, abutting residential, non-residential uses. Um, I mentioned before that we had a planning commission meeting on the, on January 12th and there was unanimous, uh, unanimous support for the, uh, the, the proposal minus the, uh, comp plan text amendment. That was actually considered on December 8th, but again, there was unanimous, uh, support for that one as well. Um, there was one, I did, uh, issue identified, um, at that planning commission meeting and that was that, uh, staff did not include a minimum floor area ratio as part of the, the building intensities or the, uh, intensity standards. And, um, you know, the, the question that came from that concern is would this compromise the, the density and character goals of the retrofit plan? And so staff looked at that and we considered how, um, implementing a minimum FAR might affect present uses and how that would play into the future development of the, of the area proposed for rezoning. Um, in the staff report, there are 10 properties listed that don't meet the minimum FAR. So they're under that point two. Um, I, I have to offer, um, a correction to that. There were four other properties that were, that were missed on that analysis. Um, three of the four that were missed are undeveloped or there were parking lot. And then the fourth one is a single family home, which is unoccupied and is no longer allowed, even within the I3 district. So we e- expect that to be redeveloped, you know, in accordance with, uh, whatever zoning district is there, whether that be I3 or TI, but it can't be a single family home. The, the comp plan text amendment, uh, as I mentioned before, just allows, uh, residential and unrelated retail within the, uh, industrial land use category. So it would just be a simple text amendment to include that. There wouldn't be any change of, of housing figures or population figures. It would just be that, that simple of a, an amendment to the comp plan. As I mentioned, uh, there was, we did receive one email in support of this effort. Um, but the bulk of the correspondence has really just been from people who are curious about what the city's proposing. So it's just been providing clarity. Um, that's, it, it's just merely, uh, giving them information. Uh, but otherwise we did get one, one resident supporting. Uh, we have quite a list of suggestive motions for council to consider. There's five in total. The first three deal with, uh, the, um, there's two ordinances, um, uh, recommending approval of the, uh, TI district and the amendments that would establish it. Uh, amendments to the city zoning map to, uh, rezone those properties, uh, seen in Exhibit A of the, um, are, are shown in Exhibit A of the, uh, actual, uh, ordinance. And, um, there's also a resolution amending the, uh, 2040 comp plan to modify the language associated with the industrial land use category. The next two motions are just summary resolutions for your consideration, but with the. But with that, I can take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Council questions? Councilmember Loman.
So, and I know we've talked about this before. So I wanted to just ask with, with respect to, you know, we've got, you know, basically this, this IT going on here with this piece here. The alternative would be, and I'm not trying to speculate here. I'm just trying to understand why I should support this rather than the alternative or just saying, no, I don't want to do this.
Okay.
If, if, if we were just to rezone all of that residential, you know, it's rather than, you know, we make all those properties non-conforming. But, you know, theoretically, you'd be able to use, you know, you'd be able to use that. And that would avoid the conflict that would, would arise later down, down the line. Now, it wouldn't be as pretty as, as this here, where you'd have that piece here. But if, if the intent is to, to have residential and make this into a, a main street or maybe you have a combination of residential and, and commercial and you come up and down the, down the zone with that. Why, wouldn't I rather, why don't I rather just be clear about this, what I, what we want to do and just rezone that rather than trying to have this conflicting use here? Well, I mean, I mean, I, I get some of the benefits of doing that. But I, I don't understand why we're setting this up to, to, to do that, just be clear and just say, hey, we just want to zone this residential, you know? Help me understand why I should support this over, over that type of alternative.
Yeah. Mayor, council member, the, the, I mean, it's not going to be purely residential. We are expecting a, a mixed use type of, you know, horizontal or vertical mixed use, mix of uses. We also realize that this is, this is a multi-year, multi-decade redevelopment process. We don't expect redevelopment to occur tomorrow after, if, you know, should it be adopted? It's going to, it's going to take some time. What we, what we are is we're continuing the conversation that was established by the retrofit plan, which was looking at the future of the corridor and setting the stage for its redevelopment to capture the vision that was established by the community of an active vibrant corridor that's still promoted the eclectic use, mix of uses that are already in existence today minus a necessary component of residential. And then retail is also, you know, it goes hand in hand with residential. We need to be able to serve the local population that will live along this corridor. So what this new zoning district does is it doesn't shun the industrial uses that are in existence in today. So we provide that accommodation and we realize that there's opportunity for the, a synergy to occur between present industrial uses, maybe future industrial uses as well as retail and residential. We don't expect every single residential development to have conflicts with a non-residential use there. And, but for where those conflict, where we do see those conflicts, we have built in a, a means to control for them by making residential a conditionally used, just to making sure that if we put residential there, we're not setting ourselves up to deal with conflicts on a daily basis with the adjacent industrial use that might be making too much noise, too much light, too much glare, too much. You know, we have, although, we have those performance standards to also control for those byproducts of industrial use. But nonetheless, we, we are setting or we're, we're putting ourselves in a good position to control those through the conditions we establish before even development occurs. And then we can also continue monitor and, you know, tweak as we see fit in order to, again, make sure that if residential, if residential is a desired use there, making sure that it just doesn't be a, be a burden to existing industrial uses or other future business uses along within that area.
Thanks for, for that expla, explanation. I, I'm not sure if I follow or agree. I think I'm now worse off from that, that description. Let me ask this, and then I'll, I'll wrap up here, Mayor. From, how many IT 3 do we have in, in the city? Industrial properties do we have? And, and with this change here, theoretically, some of these could, could go away, some of them could stay. What does this do to that? I know that, you know, industrial zoning, you know, on average, I mean, those tend to be, you know, high property values and you get a lot of revenue from those, those sources. So I'm, I'm just, you know, just trying to understand, you know, by making this change. Certainly I support the, the retrofit. And so in my mind, I'm thinking, well, maybe you find someplace else to, to put the IT in the city. I don't know where that is. And you just say, you know what, we're just going to commit to, to, to doing this. And, you know, even though the, the property is in the back end of that, we're, we're not going to let, we're just going to, you know, make those IT as well, all the way up and down. So we know that we're getting rid of that. So help me understand how many, how many IT we have in the city? Not IT, but just industrial properties.
Yeah. Mayor, council member, I will just say that this is, we are considering 28 lots of how, I'm, I'm not sure what the total area of industrial is. It's spread out quite a bit across the city. It, it, it agglomerates in certain portions and this is certainly one of them. We're just merely carving off a piece of that industrial that lies along Lyndale where, again, this retrofit plan established a vision that doesn't necessarily coincide with what you, what the I-3 district allows to do. So we, we're, I'm, I'm not really sure what the, what the overall impact is to the available industrial properties. Again, industrial will be allowed within the TI district. So it is part of that slate of industrial, industrial lands or industrial properties. So how much it actually consumes of the, the total amount of industrial properties, I'm not really sure.
We, we don't necessarily know. That's fine.
I mean, there is a number, but I, I just don't have it before me.
And councilmember Loman, I think I said IT at least once as well, but it's actually TI. It's the transitional industrial. It's not IT industrial technology.
Turning things around, yeah.
Let's be clear on that. Any other questions of Mr. Ramler Olson? Very good. Thank you much.
Thank you.
And we will open the public hearing and I see you're ready to go. This is, we will open the public hearing on item 4.2.
My name is Jim Elliot. I have a building at 92nd and Grand, walking distance to Lyndale. And I'm curious what transitional industrial means.
The definition of transitional industrial. So, Mr. Ramler Olson?
Thank you for that question, Mayor, members of the city council. So, kind of think about what's the best way to? Transitional industrial. So we, we do provide an intent and purpose statement as part of the city code amendment. Let me see if I can actually. So here, I'm just going to. Okay, that's not working. That's kind of smaller than I would have liked, but, so we have that intent statement that is part of the, the batch of amendments for city code. So 21.206.07, the transitional industrial district is designed to accommodate a mix of industrial, retail, entertainment and residential uses. It's consistent with recommendations from the Lyndale Avenue suburban retrofit plan adopted April 5th, 2021. And sites and buildings within the TI district will reflect a pedestrian-friendly mixed use environment with active ground floors while controlling for the impacts of intensive industrial and auto-related uses.
Does that help clarify things?
Sort of. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing on item 4.2. Any additional folks in the council chambers wishing to come forward? Mr. Sable, is there anyone online who wishes to speak to item 4.2?
Mr. Mayor, we do. We have a caller with the prefix 612-986. 612-986, your line is open. You press star one to unmute or actually I will unmute you. 612-986.
Hi, this is Ken Olson. Do you hear me clearly?
Yes, we do, Mr. Olson. Good evening. Welcome.
Fantastic. Thank you. I, I just wanted to speak in favor of this change, both to establish the district and to rezone these properties. And, you know, addressing the idea of why do a transitional district rather than just moving everything to a B4 or something like that? I think there's, there's something unique about Bloomington. Just this week, I heard Bloomington has more jobs per capita than either Minneapolis or St. Paul. And, and that's something unique about Bloomington is we have a city that is a mix of residential and commercial. And that commercial is not just the hotels and the shops at the Mall of America, but it's our industrial properties, our, our big, you know, Donaldson and these other companies that, that are industrial. And we have an opportunity on Lyndale Avenue to show how that industrial can be mixed in with our other commercial and our other residential in a unique way that maybe nobody's ever seen before. So I really like the idea of this transitional district.
Thank you for your comments and your insights, Mr. Olson. Appreciate it. Mr. Sable, anyone else on the phone?
Mr. Mayor, no one else is on the line.
Last call for anybody else in the council chambers wishing to speak on this? Also, no one coming forward, no one on the phone. I would look for a motion to close the public hearing on item 4.2.
So move second.
Motion by councilmember Martin, second by councilmember Loman to close the public hearing on item 4.2. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries seven zero. Council, additional discussion, questions on this? Councilmember Delisandro and then councilmember Loman. Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My, my question, I was, I was just kind of curious if we had any feedback. It doesn't sound like it, but, or if we attempted to get feedback from some of the property owners within this area. So I know that there's a couple for lease signs and things like that out there. And so I'm wondering if there's a stimulating effect here that might be happening by, by some of the commercial real estate folks on, on, in that corridor as well, who are like, hey, I'd love to help you, but I need a little bit of, of, you know, support here so I can do something more mixed use or whatever. Have we heard that feedback? I'd love to hear about it if we did. Thank you.
Ramler Olson, have we heard from, I'm, I'm assuming we had an outreach and engagement plan in place and just wondering what kind of feedback we've received from business owners along Lyndale Avenue?
Thank you, Mayor. Member, sorry, councilmember Delisandro. The, the engagement with that, activities that were, that, you know, coincided with the kickoff of the project in early October were some door knocking, where we went actually to the businesses and we got to speak to people that worked there. We weren't necessarily fortunate enough to speak with each time, speak to the, the, the building owner, for instance, if it's a multi-tenant building. And so, you know, we would love to get their feedback as well. However, we also did some mailers and we've been soliciting, or we've been open to soliciting, getting feedback this entire time. We did have some face-to-face contact with folks. Granted, it was about six folks at the, at an open house event on October 12th. But nonetheless, we had a fruitful discussion. We had boards set up and, you know, we, we worked through some of the concerns and we heard some of the possibilities actually with what we were proposing. And we haven't heard any direct support for, or how should I say this? We haven't heard anyone talk about some of those redevelopment possibilities. We're keeping our ear to the ground as, you know, as they come in. We do know that there, as I mentioned, there was a, a, a home located along Harriet Avenue South that is within the area proposed to be rezoned. We are talking with the, the property owner of them and they've expressed interest in, you know, clearing that home and bringing that property and it's an adjacent one. So there's a contiguous set of parcels that are under one ownership and seeing if there's some development possibilities with, with that. Otherwise, people that, you know, when they've inquired about this effort, they have, they have expressed some interest in the idea of bringing more mixed uses to the corridor. But other than that, I can't, I can't really see two people expressing interest.
Councilmember Loman?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for, for you. So I'll sit, I'm sitting down there. So I guess in my mind, I'm just, you know, the way that they, we've got this mixed use, it's got, includes industrial, retail, commercial, and then kind of a conditional residential. And in my mind, you know, I can see industrial, retail, commercial or residential, commercial and retail. Those are the kind of things that, that make, make sense to me in my mind. So I'm not, I'm not against, you know, some type of mixed use, but I just, you know, I kind of look at this, you know, I just, residential and industrial, it just don't make sense to me. I just see a conflict there and, I don't know, maybe that's just my own, my own brain. But what's the difference between, this is where my question is for you? You know, where you just say, you know what, there's no zoning here at all. We're just going to let the market drive, you know, what's going to be there. What's that line between that and what we're doing here? You know, what, what does it take to get to a point where you just say, you know what, we're not going to, we're just going to let the market drive that, that zoning there?
Mayor, council member, we are promoting something that is heavily market-driven. Yeah, we're, we're not proposing any sort of pre, any proactive motions by the city other than the rezoning. That's the more, most proactive we're proposing. But in terms of it being just a, a non-zoned area to allow whatever is, you know, whatever the person wants to develop, we want to make sure that whatever's being proposed is in line with the Lyndale Avenue retrofit, that suburban retrofit plan. That is the, the guide to this. So we are heavily focused on implementing that plan. There's going to be other activities that staff are going to consider throughout the year to also further that plan, but this is just one step. So we are very concerned with implementing that plan. It was a, it was a, an extensive plan. I'm sure a lot of you are aware of how much attention was paid to it. And it, and so that is ultimately our concern is just implementing that plan. So we, if you'll, see the distinction between the I-3 district, which is presently, which is there right now and the TI, we are controlling for some of those, again, heavy industrial auto dominant uses. And we're making sure that if, if those uses are, are being proposed, that we're, that we're considering them and we're considering the impacts that might be for adjacent uses that might be negatively impacted. So if residential is there and you already have an established industrial use, we want to make sure that that residential is compatible in the, the site design, the building design. We want to make sure that those compatibilities are in place before development occurs. So we're, we're still very focused on the types of uses that we're proposing for the district, but we're not just allowing anything because again, we have this guide in the retrofit plan and we feel that we've assembled the correct palette of uses that, that help implement it. So we're very concerned about that.
Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, and this is more of a comment, I just want to compliment staff the number of times this has come back to theme. At least to my ears, it's come up in, in council and our discussions as well. It, it's, it's hard to take credit for, well, how, how should I phrase this? It, it, it's hard to get excited about something that doesn't happen, but the proactive step that we're taking right now in order to reduce conflicting uses in this evolving corridor. I think the number of, of conflicts, be it noise, traffic, whatever it is, that we've headed off at the pass and that we're not going to see as this corridor develops, this kind of gem in the central of our most high-density business corridor, I think is, is a really big deal. And it's a great example of, of not waiting until there's an issue that pops up to take action. But taking a step forward and doing the hard work to, to look decades out ahead and say, let's do that work proactively on behalf of residents now before it's staring us right in the face. So I just want to compliment staff. You've done an incredible job when we have conflicting uses right next door to each other right now. But I think that, that takes another level of thought and preparation to anticipate what evolving uses are going to be and making sure we're mitigating them in the first place.
Thank you, councilmember. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. Please forgive my ignorance on this, being my first night, but I would love to understand your considerations for how this impacts what's across the street, assuming there are other plans and things like that in place. But just to bring me up to speed. up to speed, and especially what concerns me is including the residential in with this, how does that then impact the other apartments and things that are across the street when we think about, you know, affordable housing, that kind of thing? So I would love to understand how that's going to work.
Yes, Mayor, council member. By the way, congratulations. Yeah, so across the street is the zoning district B2. I believe the majority that, I think that is all B2. Within the retrofit plan, oh, well, no, I shouldn't say that. There's also some high-density residential on some of the parcels. Nonetheless, we do want to bring consistency to both sides because Lyndale Avenue is, you know, we have to think about each, each side as supporting the corridor and the health of the corridor and actually reflecting the vision in the plan. So if the other side is B2, we've looked at other uses that are found in the B4 district because a lot of those, a lot of those lots are considered for B4. I mean, that, I believe that is a future project that staff is tasked with later this year. This is, again, just the first step, but the next step will be looking at the zoning of other parcels along that, along the corridor. So we do want to be mindful of the zoning on both sides to make sure that they are complementary, they're not conflicting, and that they ultimately support the idea of a pedestrian-friendly, active Lyndale Avenue. So we do consider that. Hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you, council member. Council, unless there are additional questions here, we have this in front of us, and I think I am hearing general agreement and no disagreement. So I would look for action on item 4.2.
I'd be happy to make the motion.
Councilmember Delisandro.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. See if I can get this right. Okay, I am moved to adopt an ordinance amending chapters 19 and 21 of the city code to create the Transitional Industrial Zoning District and establish associated performance standards.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Martin to adopt an ordinance amending chapters 19 and 21 of the city code to create the Transitional Industrial Zoning District. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Delisandro.
All right. Second motion, to adopt a resolution amending the City of Bloomington 2040 Comprehensive Plan to modify the description of the Industrial Guide Plan designation.
Second. Got a motion by Councilmember Delisandro.
I skipped one, I'm sorry. I'll go back to it.
We can double back.
In any order, right?
Second by Councilmember Martin to, actually threw me off, I had to look for that. I found it though, to adopt the resolution amending the City of Bloomington's 2040 Comp Plan to modify the description of the Industrial Guide Plan designation. No further council discussion on this? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries 7-0.
Now I will move.
We didn't get ourselves in trouble taking that out of order, did we?
I was just thinking that, but let's move on.
Let's move on.
My apologies.
Councilmember Delisandro.
You know what it was? I counted them and I'm like, wait, that's not right. I only have four and we said five. And then I realized, my apologies. I move to adopt an ordinance amending the city zoning map by rezoning properties shown in Exhibit A from I-3 General Industrial to TI Transitional Industrial.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Martin to adopt an ordinance amending the city zoning map as stated. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Delisandro. Summary publication, please.
Let's do it. I move to adopt a resolution authoring, authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending chapters 19 and 21 of the city code to create the Transitional Industrial Zoning District and establish associated performance standards.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Martin for summary publication of the ordinance adopting, ordinance amending chapters 19 and 21 of the city code. No further council discussion. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Councilmember Delisandro, bring us on.
And absolutely. Finally, adopt, move to adopt an ordinance, sorry, a resolution authorizing summary publication of an ordinance amending the city zoning map by rezoning properties shown in Exhibit A of the ordinance from I-3 General Industrial to TI Transitional Industrial.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Delisandro, second by Councilmember Martin for summary publication for the ordinance amending the city zoning map. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Councilmember Delisandro. Thank you, Mr. Ramala Olson. I appreciate it. Appreciate the work that's gone into this. I know it's not been a small task, and I think as Councilmember Martin said, I think this puts us in a good position moving forward. So, well done. Thank you. Councilmember Delisandro.
Yes, sir. So two things really quickly. Number one, I apologize when I take on five of those and then you have to say four syllables instead of two syllables for everybody's name. You know, my name, I completely understand. I think I'm the only one on this council that has a four-syllable last name. So appreciate the extra effort. I did have a question. Are we planning to use this now designated TI Industrial? We've created this thing. We're going to use it in this area. Is there an expectation that throughout the Lyndale retrofit plan or maybe some of the other community, commercial node development we're doing that this sets a kind of a, I don't want to say precedent, but it sets kind of a model for what we might use it for in the future?
I guess that's possible. My inclination would be, we've known all along this, this Lyndale Avenue plan is a long-term vision. This isn't going to happen tomorrow. This isn't going to happen over the next year or so. This is going to happen over a long number of years. And so my, my assumption here is that now that we have this in place, we let it percolate and we let some of the changes take place. And frankly, we take a look at it and we see what's working, what perhaps might not be working, what, you know, how it would apply to other portions of the city, other areas, and, and we work from there. But I think our role now is to kind of sit and let this, see how it works and if any changes need to be made, we make them. And if, if it's applicable, we, we would go with it. All right, council. Moving on to item 5.1, our city council policy and issue update. First order of business in this, I will give an overview or recap of tonight's listening session. And actually, we had a very active listening session tonight. Mr. Wilson Edwards stopped by and he is advocating, or was talking about a national Minnesota Youth Combine and Play for Fun Football Camp in July and asked us to help not only spread the word about it, but asked for support in any way that the city could support it. And we certainly agreed to spread the word through my mayor's, my mayor's groups that I belong to, and I think we talked about our parking rec groups as well, and trying to just make sure that we can work with Mr. Edwards as much as possible to make sure that this would be a success. We heard from Tony Comer, some good discussion on affordable homeownership, which was timely considering some of the things that we've got going on up by Humboldt and 82nd right now and some of the decisions that were made in the last couple of weeks. So it was good to see Tony come forward. Anita Smithson brought up the very important and timely question about pedestrian prioritization of safety and sidewalks and the clearance of the sidewalks and just making, making sure our city is walkable for the folks who have no choice but to walk our city streets. And she made the point that sidewalks are in many places aren't acceptable and can't disagree with some of those, some of those sentiments. And we will, we'll continue to work with our public works folks and to continue to work with finding different ways to make it as possible, as passable as possible, despite the Minnesota winter, which is becoming seemingly more challenging, I think, as the winter warms up and it's not just cold and snow, but it warms up just enough to become ice and cold and snow, which I think is getting trickier. And then we heard from neighborhood representatives talking about the potential zoning changes we made about minimum lot sizes, and we continued the discussion that we had here at council a couple of weeks back. Unfortunately, we did run out of time and invited them back for next week to continue that discussion because I think we do have some more things to talk through and continue that ongoing conversation with our friends from that neighborhood. And as I said, it was a, it was, it was a good listening session tonight. We heard a lot of different folks, from a lot of different folks about a lot of different issues. So it was, I enjoyed it. Mr. Verbrugge, anything on your plate this evening?
Mr. Mayor and council members, a couple of quick updates. One legislative-related. We learned today from the League of Minnesota Cities that 38 different jurisdictions have requested authority for a local option sales tax. Part of that is because last year there were 19 municipalities in two counties that had requested it, and because the legislature did not move forward a tax bill last year, most of those jurisdictions have come back again this year, but we've seen the number actually almost double. And so the, just the whole point is understanding that more and more cities are looking at this as a viable tool in the same way that the City of Bloomington has asked the legislature to consider our requests. There are a number of other communities. It's becoming much more commonplace. Also learned last week that the Bureau of International Expositions has scheduled the General Assembly for June 20th and 21st. So that's when the decision will be made on Expo 2027. The bid committee, the Expo 2027 Bid Committee will be hosting a symposium in Paris at the end of March, and we will have folks attending that. So at the upcoming meeting, expect to see a travel request coming through as we continue to join the United States Department of State and the bid committee in making the case to the rest of the world about why Minnesota and the United States is where they should host Expo 2027. So more information to follow on that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Verbrugge. Any questions of Mr. Verbrugge? If not, council, any question or a new item to bring forward?
I got both.
Councilmember Loman, start with the question.
So my question will, was, when you mentioned the local sales tax piece of, at the last conference that a number of us council members attended, they had mentioned that the House didn't seem to be as interested in pushing that stuff forward and actually made some other recommendations too that seemed interesting after, you know, after our dialogue we had a couple of weeks ago. I'm just curious if you have any comment on that, or maybe it's just more just a, a statement. I don't want to put ourselves in any situation.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and council members, Councilmember Loman, we've, we've heard the same thing, and it's just a reflection of different chairs for the House Tax Committee and the Senate Tax Committee than there were for the previous session. They have different priorities. And so it's early in the session. We haven't had a chance to really learn what the chairs are prioritizing this year. And we haven't, we haven't heard from leadership, what the targets are going to be. There's a lot of information yet to come out. And since we have sort of a new dynamic and we're only about four weeks in here, there's a lot more information that's going to come forward. The League of Minnesota Cities does expect that there will be a similar process to previous years where each of the bills that have been submitted, the municipalities will be given an opportunity to make that case before the respective committees, and we'll have a much better feel once we get in front of the committees to get a sense of where they're at.
Thanks for that. Do you want me to go ahead with the rest of this?
Please, council member.
So given that I'm talking about the, I'm not sure if anybody else is going to mention it, but I figured I would. Three of us had the opportunity to attend the Ellers Conference on public finance. So I know that is a thrilling topic for me and for others, it's probably a sleeper. There were several sessions to attend, and I want to just mention a couple ones. The one that was particularly of interest to me was this long-term financial management planning. And the idea behind that is to, their goal is to try to get you to take a number of the tools and instruments that we kind of already have, but to try to package those up to help policymakers to build trust and foster collaboration between staff and policymakers. And I thought it was, I thought it was a great, great session. And one of the things that they mentioned during the session, as we work through and walk through budgets, something I like to do is do comparisons between different cities. And they actually had recommend that you try to be careful with doing that or not do that at all. And one of the reasons that they, they mentioned that to policymakers is that, you know, each, each institution has, you know, different challenges and different concerns. And when you're trying to do that comparison, you can, you can lose the nuance between that. And so try to caution us, and I know I've seen that at other national conferences, but it's a good reminder, you know, as we're looking at our budget, to be careful when we're, when we're doing those, doing those comparisons. And then secondarily, we had a great presentation by a woman. Her name was, let's see if I can get it here. She's an executive coach, Lisa Hayes, and she had a let's talk kind of session and talked about the importance of being aware of your communication and how to, how you are a leader as an executive leader. So talking about awareness, behavior, and communication. And she kind of went into a nice, long presentation about that, and she did a phenomenal job on that. I don't want to go into too many, too much details on that, but I just thought that was a real exciting piece of that piece. And then the last thing that I wanted to bring forward, Mayor, is I really like what Councilmember Delisandro has put forward in terms of what we do on the roof here with our building. And I think that's, you know, it's important in terms of how we act out our sustainability policy. But my, my question is, is that should we look to try to, you know, formalize that a little bit more as we, you know, you know, look to really do any public building to make sure that, you know, we consider all of that sustainability? Well, should we put a roof on there? You know, should we have certain types of piping and that type of thing? Really just kind of as we're, as we're looking at each one of those capital expenses that we really try to make sure that we're, you know, whatever the, whatever the time calls for, that we're doing what makes sense from a sustainable standpoint. So I just, I just put that back to you, Mayor. I like that idea and I think it's a good start, but let's be consistent. Let's look at all of our buildings and let's make sure that whenever we get ready to do a building project, we're looking at that.
I, thank you, council member. I think that makes sense. And I would ask Mr. Verbrugge, I'm guessing that that thought process is probably already in place. As we look at new roofs, we, we've had that discussion around here long enough that projects are done, if not, you know, if not to put the panels up there here and now, to at least make sure that it could accommodate the weight of the panels in the future. Is that correct in saying that?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, our facilities folks have been doing evaluations of where not only the solar on buildings could go, but also, you know, what the, what the payback is for the investment in those solar structures. We're also looking at other ways that we can get solar credit, even if it isn't by our own structures, by, you know, buying into or the, the services that allow you to get credits for, for the solar. Those markets are out there too. So we're evaluating all of those as we go forward.
Council, anything else? I see no hands going up. So with that, Councilmember Muah, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and a second to adjourn. No further council discussion on this. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries 7-0. We are adjourned. Thank you, council, for your work this evening. Thanks to staff. Thanks to everybody who's watched and participated this evening. Have a good rest of your evening, a good rest of your week.